Holly?
My bad.
Okay, all right. Good evening, welcome to City Council meeting for March 23, 2021. We are getting a late start this evening due to the length of the redevelopment agency meeting that preceded this meeting. This meeting is being conducted in accordance with directives issued by Governor Sisalak limiting in-person attendance for this meeting. Public comment may have been submitted prior to the meeting via email or voicemail. We will also make available a phone line for people, members of the public to call in during those public comment periods. Items listed on the agenda may be taken out of order. Two or more items for consideration may be combined and any item on the agenda may be removed or related discussion may be delayed at any time. I'll call the meeting to order and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam City Clerk, were there any public announcements?
No announcements.
Thank you. We'll begin then our first public comment period. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. Each person has up to five minutes to speak on a specific agenda item and as always, we request people to be civil and concise in their comments.
Yes, I have public comment, please. Yes, good evening, Council. For the record, Fred Volz. Beyond the pictures, it seems logical that the Parks and Recreation Report would contain pool usage information just as rounds of golf were presented. Where are the totals of swimmers by month or year? Will Parks and Recreation provide this information in its oral remarks for the agenda item this evening? With Council giving the go-ahead for the June municipal pool ballot funding question, the community needs to see how many people actually use the existing pool. This information should be placed on the city website as the commitment was made to educate the public on all facets of this project and use of public money with unbiased facts. And actually, it would be helpful to have pool usage information for the last five years as a good benchmark given the project's magnitude since calendar year 2020 was anything but normal. As for the monthly financial reports, there still has been no visible progress in separating the available utility cash of $32,834,509 between the operating fund and the capital fund. The revenue and expenses are budgeted separately, but the cash is lumped together. The budget is not the same as available cash. When will this reporting problem be fixed by finance? The reports also indicate zero year-to-date postings for depreciation at the cemetery, airport, and utilities. Why are monthly charges dutifully made for central services, administration, and billing collections in utilities but not for depreciation? Is finance waiting until the end of the fiscal year to post depreciation? And if so, why is that appropriate and accurate accounting when the numbers are likely a straight-line posting? And I would ask that these comments be added to the record. Thank you.
Thank you. This is our initial public comment period for the City Council meeting. The phone line is available, the number 702-589-9629.
Public comment?
This is Ainsworth Hunt. I'd like to make a comment on Agenda Item Number 10.
Go ahead.
Toll Brothers has made the only proposal that I consider to be acceptable. The other proposals were essentially for small housing, very tightly conjoined, looking for variances in our zoning. The Toll Brothers made a proposal that made sense in terms of the property being near the golf course for larger houses and larger tracts of land. And in my opinion, that is the only acceptable proposal that I've seen out of the four. Thank you for your time.
Public comment?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Hi, good evening, Council members. Neil Desai with the National Parks Conservation Association, just commenting in support of the resolution for the proposed Aviquame National Monument. Just want to thank you all for your work to support Lake Mead National Recreation Area and other conservation areas in the region, including the Boulder City Conservation Eastment. Thank you so much for your work.
Thank you. And this is the initial public comment period.
Public comment?
Hi, hello?
Hi. State your name for the record.
Thank you. Amanda Moss, M-O-S-S and Sam, S's and Sam, with the Southern Nevada Home Builders Association, calling to read a statement that we submitted via email in support of Item Number 11. SNHBA is the oldest and largest residential trade organization in Southern Nevada and represents over 90% of the single-family residential market. We appreciate all the hard work from Boulder City staff, especially Building Official Mark Palm and Manager Mr. Mays in ensuring Boulder City's code matches Clark County's language and language in Assembly Bill 163 of the 2019 session that ensures builders are compliant with fixtures installed per building code if a WaterSense certified product does not exist for that fixture category. As you may be aware, there have been significant impacts on product availability in all levels, including with lumber, AC condensers, breakers, appliances, and plumbing fixtures as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and we would urge your support of this ordinance. I'm happy to answer any questions. I know Mr. Mays and Mr. Palm and I have exchanged a couple of emails back and forth. I'll be available and stay on the line for the actual item itself. But lastly, to wrap up my comments, we want to extend a huge congratulations to Mr. Palm on his upcoming retirement and look forward to continuing to work with this great city and its staff in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And unfortunately, we won't be able to have you stay on the line as this is the only line we have for public comment.
I think she hung up.
The phone line is available then. The phone number for public comment is 702-589-9629.
Public comment?
Hi, my name is Gabriel DeCara. I'm with the Nevada Conservation League. I'm a 501(c)(3) nonprofit dedicated to maintaining and enhancing the natural character of Nevada and the quality of life for Nevadans. I'd like to thank the Council for addressing the proposed Aviquame National Monument, which contains some of the most visually stunning, biologically diverse, and culturally significant land in the entire Mojave Desert. Boulder City has long been dedicated to protecting Nevada's landscape against overdevelopment, and we hope you carry that legacy on today. Designating these lands as national monument would ensure their preservation for the benefit and enjoyment of future generations, and I hope the Council will see fit to support the resolution. Thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you. This is the initial public comment period. Anyone wishing to make comment, the number 702-589-9629. Madam City Clerk, do we have any written emails or voicemails submitted?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. There's two comments submitted. The first is regarding Item Number 10 from Clark Newby. My name is Clark Newby. I have been around golf courses since I was 10 years old. I have lived and golfed in Boulder City since 1979. I would like to respond to the proposed sale of Track 350 around Boulder Creek Golf Course. I have seen many beautiful homes around golf courses. I have read the proposals from the four companies. I believe golf course homes should be appealing with big lots and single-family detached homes. Toll Brothers is the only company I would support. They proposed 11 to 15 homes per acre and included pictures. I know we can guarantee 30 per year with a three-, four-year build-out. Also favor one appraisal for the tract. I have heard the complaint, we are giving the land away. That land has been for sale for years with no takers. If we can negotiate a sale with Toll Brothers, we will be increasing the property tax base for the future. Thank you. Next public comment is regarding Agenda Item Number 13, is from Tiffany Piera. Greetings. My name is Tiffany Piera, a Boulder City resident of 10 years and an ecological specializing in the flora and fauna of the desert southwest. I am calling to express my utmost support for Agenda Item Number 13, Resolution 7261, the proposed Aviquame National Monument, contains some of the most visually stunning, biologically diverse, and culturally significant lands in the entire Mojave Desert. Not only will the monument establish an essential ecological corridor connecting protected lands from Arizona to California, but the area is considered sacred by several Native American tribes. It deserves proper respect, recognition, and protection. Furthermore, Lake Mead National Recreation Area is already the fifth most visited park service unit in the country, and a new national monument will simply add to the draw of the area, including Boulder City. The Council would do well to support this monument designation and in doing so would support the local tribes and natural resources in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in our initial public comment All right, we will offer once more then anyone wishing to call in, the phone number All right, hearing no others, I will close the initial public comment period. We will move to the approval of the regular agenda. Any changes, Madam City Clerk?
None.
Madam City Attorney?
None.
And Mr. City Manager?
No changes.
Thank you. Any changes by members of City Council?
Mayor, I'd like-
Councilmember Adams?
Thank you. Mayor, I'd like to place Item Number 13 to precede Item Number 9 in consideration of Mr. O'Neill's time.
Thank you. Any other changes? Mr. Adams, would you like to make a motion then?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular agenda with the changes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, we'll move to the consent agenda. Again, Madam City Clerk, any changes?
No changes, but I'd just like to point out there were some minor corrections to the minutes and they're before you.
Thank you. Madam City Attorney?
No further changes.
And Mr. City Manager?
No changes.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to make a motion on the approval of the consent agenda or any changes by members of Council? Member Folda?
Just a point of order, Mayor, the, I believe the RDA that we had before us tonight is on there, and I don't know if we need to remove. I can't find it now, sorry. Number four. From the consent agenda.
That item was held in abeyance during the redevelopment agency meeting. That would make consideration of this resolution unnecessary at this time. Would you care to make a motion then?
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda with changes by the removal of Item Number Four.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will move then to Item Number 13. Mr. Adams, I believe you had requested this.
I did, thank you, Mayor. I brought this resolution forward for a few reasons. The first is because of technical issues which hindered communication between City Council and Mr. O'Neill, who was presenting the Aviquame National Monument. Mr. O'Neill is present tonight, and I wanted to be sure that there was an opportunity for him to respond to any remaining questions that Council members may still have for the public's interest. The second was because I believe this concept is absolutely in concert with Boulder City's longstanding ideals of preserving the surrounding desert landscape and protecting it from wanton development. The boundaries provoked by the Aviquame National Monument would protect far more than just its pristine landscape. It would serve as a refuge for the incredibly diverse flora and fauna found in the region and help preserve the numerous important cultural artifacts and elements, many of which are considered to be profoundly sacred. In this week, in the weeks since Mr. O'Neill's presentation, I have heard from a number of residents both interested and supportive of the proposed monument, including those who work and recreate in or around the area. At this time, it is my understanding that representatives at the county and federal level are interested in hearing whether there is support among some of the surrounding jurisdictions that would be most impacted by the establishment of this monument, Boulder City obviously being one of them. It is my hope that we can show that the conservation of the surrounding desert landscape and the preservation of significant cultural relics remains a priority of this city. With that, I am interested to hear the thoughts of my fellow Council members regarding this issue.
Thank you. Mr., before we get to that, I would invite Mr. O'Neill if you had any comments that you would like to make.
Hello, Mayor and City Council folks, and I just want to apologize when I gave my presentation a couple of weeks ago, I couldn't hear any questions, so I felt really bad about not being able to address the questions that people had. So I want to make sure I was here to address questions and, you know, I've been working in this area for a long time, since '87, and like I mentioned, I was, came here as Superintendent of Lake Mead National Recreation Area and served 13 years there. So I've had a long history with this particular area and have worked with the native tribes over the years when I was Lake Mead and subsequent to this. And we had a remarkable opportunity now to connect all that good work that's going on on the California side all the way over to Lake Mead. And I think this is really important opportunity to protect this area, particularly as we're looking at climate change. Connecting protected areas like this increases that ecosystem's resilience to some of the impacts I think we'll probably see from, you know, increased temperatures and reduced rainfall and such. So in designing the boundaries for the monument, that was taken into account to make sure we had the elevation gradients, migration routes, all the nooks and crannies that will allow species to migrate as we see some changes in climate. But the opportunity to protect the Mojave Desert to the Colorado Plateau is an incredible opportunity, and we've been concerned for a number of years about development in that area. The wind project that was defeated several years ago, the company has applied for another permit to build a wind development in that same area, and that would absolutely destroy what we've worked decades trying to protect. So we would like to, we think this is a good thing for Boulder City. We think, you know, sandwiching this monument between Lake Mead and such is a strong economic benefit, we think, to the community. You know, outdoor recreation business is increasing dramatically in our state. It's our intent to keep access for the recreating public. I think that's really important to note because that's where people say, well, what about our access to public lands? We chose the monument as a vehicle for protecting this area because it gave us that flexibility, retained the existing designated routes for those who would like to use the backcountry and access the backcountry to the designated road system. So I wanted to make clear on that, that existing rights are protected and particularly those that are concerned about losing their access to public lands.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Hoskins?
Well, I want to thank Councilman Adams for bringing this up and for you coming. And I know you didn't hear me the last time, so I will tell you that how inspirational this area was to my deceased husband. He very much enjoyed going there, and it is something to be preserved. So thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I wanted to thank you very much for coming, and I think this is marvelous. And the comment that I had brought up before was hopefully this will continue to remain pristine, you know, that, I know that there had been other monuments where they've shrunk, that there have been issues of drilling and resource extraction, and that hopefully that that won't be the case here.
Yes, the monument would protect it from any future industrial development. I mean, that was clear in terms of any type of development. It honors existing mining claims, so those existing mining claims could be exercised. We don't think that that's significant, these claims, but that is a possibility that could happen. But a wind farm or solar development or any type of industrial development would not happen on a national monument if it was designated, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Folda?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, is there, no, I just, the pictures aren't in the packet that you had, tonight's packet, but last February when you presented the materials that you had, your PowerPoint presentation, the photos in that were just beautiful. They really, I think, captured a lot of the essence of what's down there with the animals, the flora, the historic buildings that are existence and historic markers. I like that it's preserving the outdoor recreation still, that that can be a use for it. And I just want to thank you for all this. This is a lot of work that you guys have been working on this for several years, I believe, and just want to thank you for that work for preserving Southern Nevada for the future. A couple of the callers called in tonight, you know, saying how Boulder City has a history of protecting lands. You know, we have that with the Eldorado Valley, and when that, I got goosebumps with that because it is true that we are in a very special situation and that we are able to enjoy preserving the land around us. You know, our neighbors, not so far away, don't have that same weight, you know, haven't been able to do as much with the pressures of development. And I just think that it's a very special place, and I think I'm very honored to be a neighbor to this new monument, and I hope that as it works through the federal approvals that it can continue to be approved. And just thank you for all that, your work that you've done.
Thank you.
I had the opportunity, it seems like forever ago, certainly before the pandemic, yeah, to get an aerial view of this area, and it certainly is some of the best desert, I think, in Southern Nevada, along with the petroglyphs that are in the area. I mean, there's just a great deal of history. But it is a large area, and this is primarily south of Boulder City, east of US 95 towards the Colorado River. Is that an accurate description of it?
Well, it borders the Boulder City limits, and it follows the west side of US 95 down to about Searchlight. And then at Searchlight, south of Searchlight, it includes both sides of 95.
All right.
Yes. And it does include, the acreage includes some existing, the Weepump Wilderness Area and the South McCullough Wilderness Area. So, you know, you can, and there are total about 50,000 acres. They were already designated, but in terms of continuity and management, we felt it was important to include those so that the area, when it's managed, could be managed as a, as a, as a unit.
All right. There is just recently been introduced into Congress by Senator Cortez Masto, what's often referred to as the Lands Bill. Is this being addressed in that, or is there any-
No, this is, this would go on as a separate piece of legislation. It could either be done legislatively or by presidential executive order under the Antiquities Act, and we're not sure what route- Act, and we're not sure what route that would take. But we removed it from the public lands bill because there was some concern about the elements of the land bill as it related to significant additional disposal, additional sprawl, and things like that. So rather than just get wrapped up on all those arguments, this was pretty clear to us that this is very significant to the native tribes. And it was a kind of a separate issue than to tie it all up with the public lands bill. We just thought it was much cleaner to separate that out and let it, let it, you know, go on its own merits.
Thank you. And at least as far as that bill goes then, this area is separate. I mean, it's not an overlap between areas that are in the lands bill versus this proposed monument.
Well, there are, there were three wilderness proposals that were in the public lands bill, and we're, we're working through those issues with the people that were interested in that. So that's the only overlap that we see there.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Adams, would you like to make a motion?
Certainly, Mayor. I would like to, I would like to approve Resolution Number 7261.
Second.
I'd like to second it.
I believe Councilmember Bridges beat you to that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Again, Mr. O'Neil, thank you very much, and good luck with this project. All right, that will bring us then to Item Number Nine, Presentation of the Parks and Recreation Department's Annual Report. Mr. Hall was awaiting in the hallway.
All right, thank you, Holly. Mr. Mayor and members of City Council, my name is Roger Hall, Director of Parks and Recreation for the City of Boulder City. And tonight I will be giving you a brief annual report for the Parks and Recreation Department. There we go. Well, our mission statement is to provide high-quality and cost-effective recreation activities for all residents of Boulder City. Our department organizes programs, sports, and classes for participants from six months old to 100 years old. Department responsible for cleaning and sanitizing over 100,000 square foot of city facilities, including 17 parks. Department typically coordinates community special event permits, facility rentals, and film shoots for Boulder City. And the department staff facilitates support for the Parks and Rec Commission, and now the Pool Ad Hoc Committee, which is now defunct. Department staff coordinates the scheduling of COVID-19 testing and COVID-19 vaccination appointments for the Boulder City community. The COVID pandemic, which has gripped the world, has had a huge impact on the operations of the city and Parks and Recreation Department. And prior to cutting, excuse me, prior to COVID hitting the Parks and Rec Department, it was going great guns. As of March 1, 2020, classes and sports were in full swing. Special events were booked solid for the remainder of the year. Parks and Rec staff had just hosted their first pop-up special event for the community to celebrate the new ramp at the skate park with the hopes of having similar events. And the mayor was down there, and you even got on a skateboard down there before COVID hit.
I used discretion in that matter.
And that was a good thing, too, because I was, I was worried. You know, the emergence of the COVID virus in March of 2020 caused panic and turmoil within the department and the City of Boulder City. Not much was known about the virus at the time, and with the abundance of caution and directives from the governor and the Boulder City Emergency Operations Center, the programs, activities, facilities, and special events administered by the department were systematically shut down. And classes and sports special events were canceled. The Parks and Rec staff canceled and refunded over 100 special events and an additional 60 park gazebo rentals. Staff issued approximately 500 refunds for classes, sports, and events, which totaled over $20,000. As per the governor's directive and to be on the safe side, the use of the recreation facilities and parks were shut down, and residents were encouraged to isolate at their homes. Parks and Rec facilities around the city were rigorously cleaned, and daily sanitation protocols were put into place moving forward. Along with shutting down the use of facilities, the Parks and Rec staff were asked to design and put together an emergency program to accommodate the children of first responders who were required to work during this pandemic. As everyone knows, schools have been shut down, and childcare programs such as SafeKey at the schools were closed. The program was held at the recreation center during the week and staffed by SafeKey personnel. At a later date, another childcare program was also developed and staffed utilizing buildings at ABC Park, and this program was also developed to assist working parents who were on the front line combating the virus. The program was developed following strict guidelines utilizing the youth center building, the gymnasium, and various classrooms at ABC Park. Staff from the SafeKey program and the youth center provided daily supervision for the kids, and I must tip my hat to my great staff who dedicated their time and effort in supervising these kids while their parents worked combating the virus. They did a great job. Working with the Boulder City Emergency Operations Center, staff also was asked to provide an emergency facility to accommodate the possibility that first responders in our police department, fire department, and Boulder City Hospital could possibly be infected with the new virus and would need a place to isolate away from their families. The swimming pool building with racquetball courts was closed to the public and transferred into an emergency isolation facility. The Red Cross provided cots for the individual racquetball courts, and isolation supplies were purchased by the city. The multi-use building was also transformed into another emergency isolation facility as well. Fortunately, the activation of both the pool and the multi-use building as an emergency isolation facility was never done, but there was, they were there in case we needed them. As time passed, in an effort to gradually open facilities, the governor started issuing directives regarding restrictions on businesses, sports, activities, and special events. Restrictions were put on capacity of facilities and number of people allowed to occupy the facility at any one given time. Special interest classes usually conducted indoors were canceled. Special interest classes that were able to transition to indoors were allowed to continue with six-foot social distancing and masks worn by all participants. And we have a few classes up here that took advantage of this. And following CDC and governor's guidelines, a senior fitness program, a country line dance class, and dog obedience class were able to conduct classes successfully outdoors. Now that certain restrictions have been lifted, many of these classes have returned indoors with certain limitations. And pickleball, a very popular indoor activity, has also been allowed to come back to the recreation center. Both the Boulder City Municipal Golf Course and Boulder Creek Golf Courses were completely shut down for six weeks in March of 2020, as per the governor's directive. And both courses were open after a shutdown with a number of requirements, including the use of one golf cart per golfer, limited special events allowed, and severe restrictions on dining capacity. Even with the mandated restrictions, the staff at both of the courses continue to give excellent customer service, much to the delight of grateful participants. And rounds of golf, especially at the municipal course, were and continue to increase. And hopefully, as COVID cases decrease and restrictions are lifted, both courses will get back to normal with special events, weddings, tournaments, and other golf activities. With the approval and distribution of COVID vaccines in Boulder City, the Parks and Rec Department staff stepped up to the plate and volunteered to assist the City Emergency Operations Center, the Fire Department, and Boulder City Hospital in taking phone calls and making appointments from residents wanting to get tested and receive the vaccine. This has been a monumental task, as many individuals are very anxious to get vaccinated. Staff has scheduled over 4,000 COVID tests as of this day for Boulder City residents, as well as over 5,500 vaccination appointments for the City of Boulder City and the Boulder City Hospital. There is still a bunch of work that needs to be done, and my staff is committed to getting the job done. The staff have done and continue to do an outstanding job in scheduling COVID vaccines, and they should be commended for a job well done. In order to find a large enough building to accommodate and facilitate this vaccination program in Boulder City, the Elaine K. Smith Building was set up as the main vaccination distribution point. Staffed by the Boulder City Fire Department, part-time recreation department staff, volunteers, hospital, and other city staff personnel, this facility turned out to be excellent. Residents can successfully be social distanced, there's plenty of parking, the building is centrally located and can accommodate handicapped individuals. The city will continue to utilize this building until all residents, including Clark County residents, have been vaccinated. Projects completed during these COVID times, working with the Public Works Department, the Parks and Rec Department was able to complete a couple of projects at the Boulder Creek Golf Course. We replaced a 20-year-old lake fill valve that was in really bad shape and leaking. And if you look really close, you can see, it's in the middle picture, you can see how big the valve and piping system is, as there are two men standing next to the fixture in the picture. Again, working with the Public Works Department, we were able to replace the filter grid system at the Boulder City pool. Before the replacement, we had, we have had to close the facility down on numerous occasions as grids would pop off and cause DE to get into the pools clouding the water. The system is working great now, and knock on wood, we have not had to close down the pool due to failure, you know, from this system. So accomplishments, whatever we accomplished, even though we've had some real hard times with COVID. Well, we entered into a partnership with Clark County on the Hemingway Park expansion. Thank you to the City Council for approving that project. That project saved Boulder City CIP fund over $100,000, as it was paid for by the county. We did a new pool fundraiser, a special event, swimming with Buddy the Elf, which was very popular. And during Christmas time, we had Letters to Santa project, which little children put letters to Santa, and they were answered by Santa, of course. But we, we had a good, successful event on that. And then assisting with COVID-19 testing and vaccination appointments. The golf rounds, while many of the other recreation programs struggled during the 12 months due to the restrictions surrounding the pandemic, golf seemed to thrive. For the Boulder Creek Golf Course, we had a 3% increase in rounds of golf from July 2020 to February of '21. And in Boulder City Municipal Golf Course, we had a 33% increase in rounds of golf, which is phenomenal. Looking forward, what are we looking forward to do here? Well, we have been inundated, since the governor has lessened the restrictions, we have been inundated with special event requests for parks. People are anxious to get outside, to do, to get back to normal, to get rid of the masks, to do things that they normally would have done a year ago. And so our special events and large gatherings have been increasing. Park improvements like outdoor pickleball courts, Hemingway Park expansion, skate ramp improvements, we fixed the skate ramps last weekend, and so the kids and Public Works did a great job in doing that. Navigating the new normal as the county, as the country continues to move forward with the COVID framework and potentially economic shortfalls, and restrictions being lifted and providing our community recreation opportunities for all ages. The Parks and Rec Department has been working on a parks master plan as well, and will be bringing it to the Parks and Recreation Commission for final approval in the very near future. And after we get approval from the Parks and Rec Committee, the Parks and Rec master plan will be brought to the City Council as well. At this time, I would like to bring up Recreation Manager Julie Callaway, who will be addressing budget questions from yesterday's briefing. Julie?
Good evening. We did want to provide some information regarding the Parks and Recreation Department budget. Our department includes 13 divisional budgets totaling approximately $6.5 million annually. While no specific increases were requested for the past two years, the overall budget has slightly increased, and that's primarily due to contractual obligations, a statewide increase to the minimum wage requirement, and contractual increases within the bargaining agreements. Approximately 68% of our divisional budgets are for operational expenses, with 32% for personnel or staffing expenses. Personnel for the Parks and Recreation Department includes nine full-time employees and approximately 100 part-time seasonal employees. And that's what I have for the budget.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So where do we go from here? You know, as COVID cases continue to decline and the governor's restrictions are lifted, city staff is evaluating and planning for the gradual reopening of facilities, special events, and other public areas shut down by the virus. Staff is working with the Southern Nevada Health Department, Clark County, and other city jurisdictions to develop a reopening plan, and it is anticipated that by May 1, 2021, the approval of public gatherings and special events will be transitioned to local authority. Based on the number of COVID cases, it's anticipated that severe restrictions will be lifted, and local special events and gatherings will be approved following certain guidelines. Hopefully, populations in Nevada will be vaccinated in a timely manner, and we will have the ability to open the economy and bring us back to normal, and we are looking forward for the day when this occurs. And that is the end of my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions for you.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, let me just start by thanking you, Mr. Hall, and all, everyone there at the Parks and Rec staff for everything that you guys have done. You know, if you ever want to find out just how important, you know, the Parks and Rec is to this community, tell them that they can't use some of the services that they're used to using, and you'll hear from them. You know, when this, when all of this started, you know, if you had asked me which departments would be most key in helping to weather, you know, this 100-year storm that COVID-19 has been, I don't know that Parks and Rec would have been at the top of that list, you know, in my head, but it's obvious just how much you guys have pulled, you know, not just pulled your weight, but really contributed to the safety that, to providing to this community, you know, from, you know, having to clean regularly, making sure that everything was done appropriately and within some pretty onerous standards that were set by the governor, all the way up to scheduling vaccine appointments, which, you know, has been incredibly difficult, you know, for, you know, not just our community, but all of them, and for your staff to have to take on that. I mean, that's a, you know, every department has had to deal with something new, but I think it's, I just really wanted to thank you and your staff for everything that you've done with regards to that, so.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I have a great staff, and they really are doing a good job. Thank you.
Councilmember Bridges?
Thank you. Yes, first of all, I want to echo that, what a great job you have done. It's been daunting. I know that my experience was having the five-year-old in my house across the street from the park right here, looking out the window every day with the yellow tape wrapped around, wondering how do we count down the days? And going to the extent that you did to make sure people stayed safe, and I know that's what it was all about. I was also impressed to see that there was an increase in golf, that, you know, it's almost like tell somebody they can't do it, and they're going to come out and do it even more. And I know that, same when I was looking at social media, one of the biggest complaints people had was, we want to go play more golf. What about pool use? I know a call came in at the beginning, and I was curious, has there, are people using the pool? When did the pool open officially for use, and is there an increase, a decrease?
Well, originally, we shut the pool down at the very beginning because we made that into the emergency facility, okay? After we found that, we found out more about the virus, and we found that our police and fire were not getting infected and would not have to be isolated away from their families, we brought the pool back and we opened up the pool. So the pool has been open for quite a while, and we're getting usage at the pool. The swim team is swimming again, the high school swim team started last week. If you go down to the pool, we're teaching swimming lessons, mom and babies, we have water exercise class for the seniors in the morning, again, following social distancing and... social distancing and wearing masks and all that stuff. It's been very successful, in my opinion.
Oh, wonderful. That's good to hear. I want to say that you have a great safety staff. I took my granddaughter there a few times, and everybody was wonderful, and a great COVID response. Do you, I'm wondering now that you had to repair the skateboard park, was that the issue? Was it?
Yes. We had some issues with the top of the one ramp closest to the parking lot, and also the face as you go up from the bottom to the top. And so we were going to secure a contractor to fix it, and in finding, well, we got with Public Works, and with, they were able to send a crew out last Thursday, and we ordered the sheeting, and they were able to repair it so we could get rid of the attractive nuisance down there. We didn't want to keep that up.
And hopefully, they'll stop using the gazebo.
Well, we try to make that happen, but, you know, talking to a wall sometimes doesn't work.
A moving wall.
Yes, that's true. But yes, we try to keep them off the gazebo, yeah. They're not supposed to be on there.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Hoskins?
Yeah. I would like to thank the Parks and Rec and the Fire Department and the efforts in scheduling the appointments for the COVID-19. I realize there were some problems. However, this was certainly something new to all cities, and I want to thank the staff who managed to schedule these appointments for 4,000 tests and 5,500 vaccinations while doing their daily work. Boulder City has always had a devoted staff, and they can make things happen. Huge thank you to the Fire Department and the Parks and Rec, and everyone who's been involved in getting us to the point that we are today.
Well, may I say, it's been a team effort on everyone's part. We've come together to battle this demon, and we've, we're getting there.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Folda?
Thank you, Mayor. When you go last, or almost last, you have to repeat a lot of things, sorry. So, but I did want to also say a very big thank you to the Parks and Rec staff. The COVID appointments, not only did they make appointments, but they had to cancel appointments and then reschedule appointments, and just being really flexible with the ever-changing directives coming from the state and governor, and just trying to help to have the COVID vaccine and COVID testing done in Boulder City, and very effectively, I might add, that those have been done very well in Boulder City, and I've had nothing but compliments from residents about how it has been ran. So thank you. And I know there was some frustration, obviously, with the miscommunication, not miscommunication, but the changes that we're kind of out of our hands, but staff did an enormous job, and I'm continuing to do that as we're still in that process now. I wanted to ask about, so pre-COVID, maybe it's been a year, the survey went out from Parks and Rec. Do you remember that?
Yes.
Okay. Can you tell us what's happened with that survey that went out and where it's at now?
Are you talking about the survey where we asked the parents if they wanted to have childcare facilities, or?
So this was a Park and Rec survey of what parks were being, what you use, what would like to be seen. It was yellow. Do you recall this? So it's been a year or so.
Are you talking about the master plan?
Yeah, probably is the master plan survey.
Well, that master plan was brought to the Parks and Rec Commission a year ago, and basically, they had some modifications that they would like to see to it, so we started working on the modifications to it, and I think we're going to be bringing it back to them in the next few months here, and then bring it to City Council. So we took, you know, what people said. What we did is we did an evaluation on every park, and we checked out, and we started from the playground equipment to, so we could have a list of all our equipment in the park, and we could make sure that it's replaced on a regular basis. Park, park equipment should be replaced by certain standards with the national standards, and we wanted to make sure that happened. So we're in the process of putting the final touches on that to get it back to the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Okay. I was going to say about playground equipment. Ever since going to the National League of Cities, I receive emails constantly about playground equipment, so if you ever need some playground equipment tips, I got an email full of them, so.
Yeah, thank you.
But yeah, it is important to create, create parks so that they can be used, right? Because it's all about the design and making it useful, because not all parks are designed that way. Sometimes they look nice but not used, so to reevaluate that and their use, I think it's important, what we can change and what, you know, would work and what doesn't. I've heard a little bit about that with the Del Prado Park, you know, how there's kind of a playground, there's two playgrounds in there, and maybe one is not as visibly seen and may have more experience with vandalism and things like that, and just evaluating those things, keeping those up to date. So other, the other thing I wanted to mention was our summer safety program. Could you give the public an update on that, plans for summer safety?
Well, depending on what the governor, you know, the governor comes up with, because I'm sure, you know, things will be approved to go on. It won't be normal until I believe that, you know, we'll see a really dramatic decrease in the number of COVID cases and whatever. So we're waiting for the governor. Right now, we're in the middle stage of it. As of May 1st, we'll be able to increase certain numbers, and we'll have some local authority. But the governor and the Health Department are going to have some, some hands in, in some of the requirements, okay? As far as our safety program, we'll probably do the same thing in the summer at ABC, either at ABC Park or at the Recreation Center. It's very successful, and it gives the parents a chance to put their kids in something while they go to work and know that they're cared for. So we're planning on doing it, and I'm just waiting to hear what the governor has to say and what the Health Department is coming down with.
Okay. And how is our safety program going now? We just had a few students returning back to school, and I know that we, looking to, you know, with those cohorts and the hybrid situation, we've returned to some safety.
Yes. We have a morning program, and we have an afternoon program, just like we did. We didn't have enough staff, because a lot of the staff that we use for a summer program are students, and they went back to school. So we're having a hard time finding staff to supervise the kids, but we do have a morning program and afternoon program like we did prior to COVID starting.
Okay. So for recruitment, if you're good with kids and you'd like to a job, we need to hire safety qualified employees, please.
Yes, and you can fill out, you fill out an application online, and you'll be considered.
Thank you. My last questions are regarding the budget. Like you mentioned, six and a half million dollars go to culture and recreation for Boulder City. I think that shows that there's a high value to recreation in Boulder City. You have more money than the Fire Department, but a lot of that fees go to our golf courses and administration, of course, because we have to pay staff to make those things happen. Is there any plans, as you look through the future and opening up increased services for youth programs, or if there's public that want to see programs that we don't provide yet, how would they go about talking to Parks and Rec, maybe expanding on those?
Well, we have an open-door policy at Parks and Recreation. A lot of people, if they have a skill set, they want to teach a class or whatever, they can contact us. I put them in contact with our Recreation Coordinator, who's in charge of classes, and we look and see if it's a viable thing to do. We have a lot of people that come to us, and we start new programs and activities. If you'd like to see something new, just let us know, and if we can pull it off, again, we have limited staff, but we try everything at least once. If it works, it's great. If it doesn't, then we know, you know, we look for something else.
Okay. Thank you very much, Roger.
Thank you.
I do appreciate you including that budget information. I had brought that up during my briefing yesterday. You know, I would like to see, not necessarily the detail that we have in our annual budget discussions, but certainly something in there that shows, and again, Councilmember Folda mentioned it, the commitment that this city makes to its parks and recreation is probably well beyond where you would find most anywhere else, and it shows. I mean, it, the public likes that. It's an amenity that people get to enjoy. You know, I know that the pandemic restricted the use of many of our facilities, but I can tell you, after a few weeks of the lockdown, I couldn't believe how many people I saw, oftentimes couples out walking, just getting outside, enjoying some fresh air, getting outside of those four walls. So having the open space that we have, I think, was beneficial for the COVID mind to get out and exercise a little bit. Something that was behind the scenes, and you've talked about some of the things that Parks and Rec did, but when this was first starting and we were unsure of what was going to happen, your department facilitated a lot of the things that fortunately we did not have to go to, and you've mentioned several of those, but I recall from the emergency operations planning that was being done early on, the plans that were being executed, all the work that your department did as far as identifying facilities, obtaining things like the COTS, all of those things were being put together early on in this, so the city would be prepared if things got worse than they did. I know I've heard that, you know, at the golf course, for instance, I've heard that one of the people down there succumbed to COVID-19. So this impacts all of this community adversely, but I appreciate the work you've done. You know, I've certainly heard from a few people that were frustrated with the process when the vaccines were first being offered because they couldn't get through, but that was quickly resolved. And the compliments that I've heard from, about your staff, the way they've handled things, the way they've gotten back to people to keep this process running as smoothly as possible, you know, I've said it many times, the only way we're going to get out of this is with this vaccine, and your department has certainly facilitated that. You know, the next event, and it may not be the next one, but the first one I'm going to be looking forward to is the Fourth of July, and hopefully, folks will get those vaccines taken care of. We've got about another, I think, two weeks, week and a half, before all age groups are going to be eligible. I'm sure your staff is going to be very busy getting those appointments set up, but that's the way we're going to get out of this. Thank you and all your staff, the support you gave to our ad hoc pool committee, the information you were able to provide to us. Again, my appreciation to all you and your staff do.
Thank you. You know, we're just part of a team. We have a great team here in Boulder City, and we're part of a team, and we get the job done. So thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, we'll move to item number 10. For possible action, receive and review responses to the request for information for Track 350, the Boulder Creek Golf Course residential lands. Ms. Pelletier?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Diane Pelletier, Boulder City Finance Director. Item number 10 is for possible action, to receive and review responses to the request for information for Track 350, which is Boulder Creek Golf Course residential land suggestions, and direct staff is appropriate for next steps. So at City Council direction, the city issued a request for information regarding, can't talk with this thing, I'm sorry. I tried. Everybody else can, but I can't, so, okay. At City Council direction, the city issued a request for information regarding Track 350 to solicit information and ideas from the development community to improve the marketability of Track 350. So the steps we used in this process were, on January 7th, 2021, the city published an RFI in the Nevada eMarketplace, NGM. The posting was received by 2,400 entities. On January 10th, the RFI was published in the Las Vegas Review-Journal. In addition, the city contacted the Southern Nevada Home Builders Association to solicit their assistance in a direct distribution to their members. Their membership includes the well-known developers, along with smaller builders and developers. So on February 4th, the city received and posted answers to six questions received from potential respondents, and the request for information, or RFI, was closed on February 25th with four proposals received, which were in your council packet. So at this point, I'd like to suggest as a potential next step in the process, that the council could provide their basic RFP requirements to staff and direct us to prepare a draft RFP for council review. So my understanding, because there haven't been many of these done since I've been here, I think this might be the first one, my understanding is that traditionally, the council structures land sale RFPs. So with that, we would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments? Councilmember Hoskins?
Thank you so very much for all the information. We need affordable housing, but I don't believe we need it at the golf course. I've received many requests for this development to include homes with 1,400 square feet or more, and spacing between the homes of more than just a few feet. I've been told that this land is the last available land in Southern Nevada around a golf course, and possibly that's because there's no more golf courses being built. But this land is valuable, and we need to ensure we have a development conducive to this area. Real estate is at an all-time high. We have an excellent opportunity to get the actual value for this land, and I would not like to see small houses, three-story homes, which are not allowed, or houses with storage
Councilmember Bridges?
Yes. Thank you, and I appreciate all the information that we got. Yeah, I've had quite passionate comments made to me about, about the future of Track 350, and down to workforce housing and affordable housing, which was interesting, because a friend of mine who works for Storybook, when I asked him what affordable housing was, he said $350,000 home. That's affordable. And I thought, well, that's not what comes to mind with affordable housing. As much as I believe that Boulder City probably needs more affordable housing, places where people who work in our stores, in our businesses can live and pay a reasonable rent or pay a reasonable mortgage, I'm not sure Track 350 is that either. It is around a golf course. It's not accessible into town. I mean, it's quite a, quite a walk. It's not where you would typically find that. In fact, I did research into something called an inclusionary housing zone, and I had mentioned that to Michael, where you might take 10% and call it an inclusionary zone, and have it sold to or given to a 501(c)(3) as part of it. I think those are honorable, unhonorable ideas, objectives, but I'm not.
Goals?
What?
An honorable goal?
I think it's an honorable goal. I really do. I think we have mixed needs for this, you know? We want to maximize the amount of money we get for the, for the property, and in addition, we have to sell it for an appraised value, and it isn't, I'm not, I'm concerned about this thought of giving it away. I mean, once we come up with zoning, we have to sell it for that appraised value. And so I also have some concerns about the developers that talk about wanting to manipulate the 30 lots, and maybe you could have one developer and kind of call it something different. I'm concerned about anything commercial on there, including storage facilities, self-storage products. I have to agree that I like the Toll Brothers idea, that they're, what they're doing, the only thing I would add to that is I could see duplexes. I could see, like I said before, you go to Scottsdale and you look at golf course communities, a lot of times, the houses around the course are duplexes or patio homes. They're not large, single-family homes. So that, I, I think we need to have the conversation of how Boulder City is addressing the needs for affordable housing, and I'm not sure the sale of Track 350 is the answer to that question. So I think, mentally, you know, it's already homes. So, um, I think rental units or 93 homes differentiated. So I was, I couldn't see any more than six dwelling units per acre, and maybe R2 around the golf course, so that. That's it.
I'm sorry, did you say R2 around the golf course?
R2 is not, uh, what you call, the two residences.
Attached?
Yes, those are small homes.
Right, right.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that that was what you intended.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure if that's what you would end up with if you have patio homes, say two attached patio homes. Is that typically what an R2 would be?
Yes, if you're looking at attached, like a townhome development, or duplexes, that would be the R2. If you're looking at multiple attached units, then you'd be looking at R3.
R3, yeah. I mean, I would prefer them not to be attached, but I thought having maybe patio homes around the golf course. The fact that in the original attempt to sell this, that the 10,000, 15,000 square foot properties did not look attractive in the original offer. So, just some thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Councilmember Fola?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So, um, I thought I knew what I, when we put out this RFI, I thought I had a really good idea of what should go there, and since this RFI has come back out, it's been really interesting, the input from the community that we've received, and it's totally different than what this RFI has presented. And so, um, there's probably a little more exploring that I would like to see because of that new information that, that I think, what I, what I have a concern with, with these big developers, is that their structure is that they have a certain products, product, you know, or, you know, a certain amount of homes that they have, models, and that someone who's interested in buying comes in and picks which model they would like, and which, you know, sometimes they're allowed to pick which lot they'd like that to go on. And so the purchaser ends up being the developer of what the, what the property looks like. And so it kind of takes away what the, Boulder City creating something and just letting the market create it. And so just being, just a little bit of background for me is that I have family members who do design homes for a living, so I've spent a lot of times driving around, looking at homes in my childhood and lifetime, and, and just last week doing the same. And it really is about how you design something, even story, it comes down to, you know, your variances and, and what you allow, and if you don't want something really cookie cutter, then you have more models that are available to, to have it more diverse. But what happens a lot of times is that diversity, you know, if one model is more popular than another, then you just, you lose that. And so I think it's important, a couple of things for us to consider is to, what are the needs of Boulder City? What do we want to look like? And to allow an RFI that, or RFP, to allow for us to be the creators of what that looks like, and not just letting the market, the shoppers basically develop that. So, um, another thing with this is that a lot of discussion, again, of the, the growth ordinance, it's referred to as the growth ordinance. And, and I just wanted to read it, because I think there's some misconception of what the growth ordinance is. And as we're talking about growing, possibly, I just want to put that in the forefront. And this comes from, um, Title 11, Chapter 41. "The purpose of this chapter is to control the rate and distribution of residential and hotel development on a year-to-year basis in the interest of advancing the public welfare by ensuring that the city is maintained as a healthy, spacious, clean, well-balanced, carefully-controlled community, primarily preserving its small-town atmosphere and character and avoidance of uncontrolled and rapid growth, and to accomplish that purpose by A maintaining the city's separate and distinct geography from other communities," so a buffer, "emphasizing the preservation of existing open spaces and lands, maintaining the balance and mix of housing and building types and values, and thus providing a range of prices and rents in order to accommodate a variety of housing needs." I think that one's the most important of this, of those goals. What keeps happening in Boulder City is you have sections of very cookie cutter, same development homes. And so, you know, like, you know, what's referred to as, you know, there's basically different zones of different kinds of housing. So if you're in a certain zone of one area, you could have very similar housing. And it, um, I think that we have an opportunity to move away from that. There's been a lot of suggestions to me that I've, I'm really curious about exploring and if we could have more information on those. But the biggest asset right now is the golf course that's going to be adjacent to, that's an asset to our city. That's worth a lot of money. We put a lot of money into it each year, and so we need to make sure that we're preserving that and whatever is chosen. When, so recently, I've been looking at what other golf courses have adjacent to them, all kinds of things. And when I talk about this, I know people are going to say, ah, we're choosing all those things, but I just want everyone to picture that it's not just big homes on golf courses anymore, and to try to open your eyes to other possibilities. Because a lot of people in, or a lot of golf courses, I would say, have a lot of different models that are very successful, and, and provide an asset that the golf course, helps the golf course and not hurts it. And I think that we need to maintain that balance. There's a couple of, so I think establishing our goals first, and then deciding on which development would, would fit those goals. I would like to see a high mix of residential uses and sizes. And I think that with the way that the property is, it's very unique in its shape, that it could provide for a different zoning within that property that would allow a different sized housing, and still conform to what the neighborhood communities, and help those communities that are next to it as well. But I would also say that it's very far from the town center, the commercial area of town. And what, and so you have to kind of think about that, where it's maybe not just residents that want to come there, but people visiting and touring the golf courses or using the golf courses. And we don't really have anything to, we don't allow Airbnb in Boulder City. Our hotels are not near that area, and so, you know, what are our goals and needs? And so I think what I've heard from input is the ability to allow people to use their short-term or like a rental or a hotel kind of thing to help the, the golf course. And this is, there's a few examples of that in St. George, Utah, which is not very far from us. They have a lot of golf courses up there, but they have some resort-type things that are adjacent to their golf courses where people can, it's a mix of either, you know, and we can choose or not do any of this, I'm just letting you know what's available. But they have a mix of housing that could be Airbnb-approved. They have a mix of villas that could be rented and, and sort of a development where it's kind of a, it's not quite a hotel, but it's kind of a resort. And I'm just thinking of the land adjacent to Adams would accommodate those kind of things. Also, a different idea would be like a mixed use, where you have some office or commercial with housing above it along Adams, kind of a mini mainstream street, was another suggestion that I received. That would allow for, you know, um, small commercial, like, you know, it's a golf course, right? So if you have wedding photographers or other assets that would accommodate the golf course and be near the golf course, and still provide housing along Wissel Cone that would accommodate and be in sync with the neighborhood as well, but have those separate properties, separate entrances, so you're not interfering with one another. So a lot of these things have been thrown out. I haven't been able to get with staff to see if any of that is even allowed in Boulder City, or what that would require. But I think just kind of sitting back and, and looking at what our goals are, I don't think everyone wants the same size dwelling, and I think this land could accommodate a variety of those. And I think there's some other issues with trying to make sure that the golf course is an asset, and that it's not just homes, because the people are trying in and for tournaments. The golf course has been working really hard to bring in tournaments that bring a lot of people, there's nowhere really next to the golf course for them to go. And this land is far enough from the main part of town that I think if it was, if, you know, visitors and tourism wouldn't really interrupt the residential areas as much because of its location. So I just, those are some thoughts I had, and it would be interesting to see from staff what the zoning or other requirements would be for kind of some mixes within that area. So those are some thoughts.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
Thank you. Um, I guess I'll start off with a question just based off of some of the, the things I've heard tonight, and this might be more directed towards Michael. Are you familiar with what other lands are available that have been approved by voter for residential, residential development at this time? I'm sorry to throw this at you right now.
Yeah, it, off the top of my head, I cannot recall another example that's available like this, but I certainly look into that.
Thank you. And the reason I ask is because, you know, when, when we talk about, you know, attainable, affordable, entry-level home, you know, whatever, whatever terminology we all want to use, what we're talking about is, is housing that can be afforded by, you know, the, a variety of different people, you know, especially first-time homebuyers, you know, young families that are either, you know, wanting to continue to maintain and stay and live here in Boulder City, or who are wanting to raise their family here. But, you know, one of the things, and this is a little bit in line with what member, Councilmember Fola had talked about, was when she talked about the actual growth control ordinance, I was looking at the master plan, and one of the things it talks about in there was the incorporation of a variety of housing types and models, sizes, and price ranges in new neighborhoods is strongly encouraged to provide diverse housing options for Boulder City residents and avoid monotonous streetscapes. So, you know, so it's, it's stated pretty thoroughly everywhere that, you know, we really do need to consider variety when we are discussing development. I do think that this particular tract, you know, the, the way that it bends, you know, there, it, it already borders, you know, two very different types of residential areas, you know? And so I don't think having some variety in there is, would be a bad thing. I don't think it would take away from the golf course, I don't think, and I think it could be a benefit to the community as a whole. I also think, you know, the reason why I was asking about, you know, what other land is available, is because, you know, there are things within our ability to help facilitate, you know, affordability, more things that could be, you know, create incentives for developers to, to create, you know, housing for, that could be more at that entry level. And so, and that was why I was asking that question, is because, you know, with, you know, especially because we do have this particular tract tied to, you know, upcoming ballot question to help support the funding of, of the pool, potentially, of course, that still has to get approved by voters. You know, I'm just trying to think of best use for the land and making sure that we're doing that. You know, I, I do think I have heard from a lot of people, it was in the public comment, and I've heard personally from people that, you know, they do seem to like this Toll Brothers idea, it could be, they like, they like the pictures maybe, you know? But, you know, and I, and I don't think that's, that's totally, you know, out of reason with this. I do think that, you know, if we're not talking about donating land for affordable, you know, for, in order to build affordable housing, or looking at these other options at our disposal for this area, I don't think that we are really going to be able to create any type of housing that's going to be, as was stated, you know, that, that, you know, not below $200,000 or anything like that, right? I think that's just a reality of the market, especially here in Boulder City, you know? It's, homes are more expensive per square foot in Boulder City than they are elsewhere. You know, it's unfortunate because, you know, I don't know that it's, it's not just that, that Track 350 is not the answer to, you know, this problem with housing that we're having and the thing, it's that, you know, there is no one solution. This isn't a unique Boulder City problem, you know? Henderson, Las Vegas, you know, a lot of the country is experiencing issues with affordable housing. So where we can address it, I think we should. I don't know how to necessarily do that with this tract. I'm not, like I said, I'm, I'm certainly in support of looking at this. This land has been approved by the voters too, for, for residential use. I want to make sure that we do it in a smart way that is in accordance with our master plan, with the growth control ordinance, what the intent was, you know, not just to, you know, limit the houses, so that way, you know, it makes it a little bit more, more expensive, it raises up values. That's not what the intention was. The intent was to, to retain the qualities that we appreciate in, in this city. So, you know, I'm, you know, similar to, I think, where everybody's at, I'm, I'm very open to hear, you know, I, I know staff is looking for some direction. I just want to know, you know, what the rest of council thinks and how we can tackle that with regards to Councilmember Fola's discussion about, you know, I don't know, you were talking about a hotel necessarily or anything, you know, I start to get a little, you know, is that something we're releasing out to a third party? You know, there's, there's a lot of discussions, obviously, that need to go into that. But, you know, there's also, you know, in going around, I used to go door-to-door throughout, you know, the valley for things, you know? There are senior communities around golf courses, you know? There are a variety of different types of homes that look nice, that, that aren't ISOs or, you know, three-story monstrosities or condos or all these sorts of things, you know? There are a variety of different types of elements, and I think we have the ability to, to tackle this project in a way that comports with our growth control ordinance that, you know, is in accordance with our master plan and the intent of it. So I, I think that those are some of the, I, I think that it's able to, I'm just not quite sure what the best course of action and how to tackle that is. You know, that's, I'm, you know, I think this is, this is certainly a new process for me in, in looking at this and creating, developing an RFP for, for residential use. So that's just my thoughts right now at this moment.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I think we need to take a look back at, at why this land's even for sale. Boulder Creek Golf Course was built without direction from the residents here. It was stated that it was not being built to sell more land to build more houses on, when in fact, when they built it, they put in curb cutouts for houses all around it. So, you know, this has not had the most auspicious start of anything, but the promise was in 2010, when the voters approved it, and again, I think we need to keep in mind, 2010 was at a pretty low point during the Great Recession, revenues to the city were down, so the land was offered to the voters for approval with a statement that it would pay off the debt from the golf course and provide 10% to public safety. Well, the voters approved it, and it was never even put up for sale for years. So the golf course debt was paid off by taking money from elsewhere in city revenues to pay that off, because the golf course never made money. So that debt was paid off. Now we're looking at a potential use of that money for something else, because again, that debt has been retired. So we go out, Councilmember Hoskins brought this up, that we would go out and we would ask developers what they thought would be the, the best use of this land. We received four responses to that, and now it seems that it's like, well, we don't like that, or we're going to do something else, or that's not important, or we want something to be different about this. You know, personally, I think the responses that came back from the developers were very well-thought-out. And when we look at availability of land in Boulder City to do any type of larger project, this is, this is about it right now for availability of something like this. And I don't believe that it needs to be restricted, oh, you're only going to have this one type of house. And I don't believe that it needs to be restricted, oh, you're only gonna have this one type of house, as both councilmembers Adams and Folda have brought up. Uh, that's not what's in our master plan. What's in the master plan is to have differences uh, within these areas, not sameness. Uh, I certainly think there's a possibility to build one type of home that borders the golf course and there's still land available to do other things. And as far as value goes, I think any builder is going to tell you they make money when they build something on the land, not when they try and resell the land. So something higher density, we do have uh, zoning classifications already within our code, the R two and R three. Uh, councilmember Bridges had mentioned the R two code previously. Uh, that doesn't mean the entire development needs to be built that way. That means that some portion of it can be built that way. Uh, I've also heard a couple of the council members talk about, oh, this is far away from our commercial district. Well, it depends on what you consider to be our commercial district. Uh, to me, this is actually within walking distance of probably the majority of our businesses along Boulder City Parkway. It's also within walking distance to public transportation. Uh, this is one of the few places in Boulder City that actually is in that proximity uh, to our commercial district and public transportation uh, that's available to build something on. So I I think we're misinterpreting that, well, true, it's on the outskirts of town, but then so is a lot of our commercial uh, businesses are also along Boulder City Parkway. So I think there is room here to do uh, different things on this land. If you look at what would be the, I guess, northeast portion of it, um, you know, I I can see some higher density there. As you come down along Bristol Cone, um, uh, that should probably be lower density. The area along Adams, uh, that could be some type of commercial development. Uh, or again, higher density there. So I I think there are some real possibilities that would maintain the area along Bristol Cone as a primarily detached single family homes while doing different things up at the northern portions of the property where it is accessible to Adams Boulevard, which again, that's one of our major streets here in Boulder City. Uh, to be able to do something like that. You know, I I agree with councilmember Adams. When I hear the term affordable housing anymore, it's like, well, wha- what does that even look like? Um, so how do you get something that would be available to younger families? Uh, that again is always mentioned as a concern, but we never seem to do anything about it. Uh, I don't know that younger families can afford anything anymore, to be honest with you. But if you're going to do something, if that's your their role or your goal in doing this, then you're gonna wind up having to do something in higher densities. Uh, does that mean that the entire uh, forty five acres would be that way? No, it certainly doesn't, and that's not what the developers responded with either. They responded with suggestions to do this as kind of a mixed uh, development, which is what our master plan calls for. So I think there's real opportunity here to address some of the things. I think it's also important to remember over the past probably four or five years, we've built more houses in Boulder City than we have for the last twenty years. So we're not gonna have a lot of opportunities to say, well, well, you know, we'll wait till the next project to do this. Because if you look at that argument, that well, we'll always do it the next time, the next time, the next time, uh, what you find out is we get away from our controlled growth here. We're no longer being conservative about it. We're are always constantly saying, well, we'll do more and more and more uh, because we're trying to address this need that that next project never really addresses that need anyway. So I think there's some opportunity here. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and try and answer some of the questions that staff has asked for. Um, one of them is the maximum development density allowed to be. Um, I did a quick calculation on the R two and three zones. It looks like uh, maximum would be approximately ten units per acre. Mr. Mays, any comment on that? I did that based on the uh, I believe it's the four thousand and eight thousand square foot lots. Dwelling size for each? Up to fifty percent?
So in the R three zoning, um, the minimum lot area per dwelling unit um, for two family dwellings is four thousand. And uh, for multifamily dwellings, um, so more than two, uh, it would be twenty five hundred per dwelling unit.
Okay. And again, the, it shifts if you're looking at the R seven, which is your standard home. Uh, examples being the uh, Boulder Hills Project. Uh, those are seven thousand square foot lots. Uh, dwelling is minimum of a thousand square feet, but up to forty percent of the lot area, which would mean you could go up to about twenty eight hundred square feet for the home.
Yes.
I actually did the math ahead of time, because I I'm not gonna do it now. Um, and then again, in the R two and R three, the percentage of the lot area that can be utilized goes up to fifty percent, which would give you homes between eight hundred square feet and two thousand square feet. And at least the note here says that's not in, including uh, garages or patio areas. So that seems to give a pretty wide span of the type of home that could be built within our existing zoning classifications. So I would say in reference to that question, that would be my answer. Uh, up to ten, but that would only account for, let's say twenty percent of the development, twenty, twenty-five percent of the forty five acres. Go ahead, yeah, uh, it's time to bargain here.
No, I just, I'm trying to think. Those are the ones, so ten, the higher den, this is the higher density would be, you're saying along Adams and Bristol Cone.
Well, I think that would be the most appropriate for that type of of dwelling, yes. We've got a main boulevard there and we've got a little bit wider area, larger area up at that northeast tip, uh, Bristol Cone and Adams.
Okay. So it's similar to the area, I think it's uh, R ten right now.
Well, I think-
Is that the, is that the area that you're discussing, you're?
Yeah, uh, originally that along Adams, I think they had R ten and R fifteen, which builders are just simply not interested in that.
Yeah, no one said R ten or fifteen would would work, which is what it's done now. I'm just trying to think for visual in my head, what, what, where the location, yeah.
Yes. So that would be one suggestion I would have in reference to these questions that staff has asked for. Uh, that the zoning be considered will be, um, again, R seven was certainly one of the classifications that I believe all of the uh, developers had suggested. Uh, that is your standard home. That's the pictures that Toll Brother included. Um, and the type of homes that are currently being built there along uh, Bristol Cone and Adams. So R seven, R two, R three, I believe would be the type of housing. Um, the next question, uh, the next bullet point there is that the respondent proposes an LID SID structure to offset construction costs related to the construction of the storm water system in Bristol Cone. Mr. Mays, would you like to give us an explanation of what a LID and a SID is?
I am gonna wait for our Public Works Director to uh, arrive. I'm sure he's watching on the monitor.
He's actually right behind you, wondering why you gave him that question.
Good evening, Keegan Lettrel, Public Works Director. Uh, my experience with an improvement district, uh, we actually used it for a sewer improvement district uh, for my old, the community I was from. Um, it was a substantial project that needed to be undertaken and basically all of the properties that were benefiting from this sewer improvement district where all the the sewer main was being installed, the cost was split up between those property owners. Um, I'm not exactly sure what they're proposing in there. It could be that they're would like to split the cost of some of those improvements throughout the lots. Um, that, that's the first thing that comes to mind. Um, trying to think of any way else it would apply.
I I do know, um, back when what we all called Bee Hill was subdivided, which is if you go out San Felipe, uh, the housing that's up in that area, you know, there had been a couple of times that, uh, one, the city did go ahead with and a couple of other times the city did not go ahead with. And that had to do primarily with the uh, construction of the streets, fire hydrants, that type of thing. That was, that did go ahead, so those lots were assessed uh, in additional property tax over a long period of time to pay for those improvements. It was proposed to put in sidewalks, uh, gutters, curbs, that type of thing, which again, would have been another additional tax placed on those lots. And the owners out there said, we want this to remain rural in nature. Uh, we don't want the additional tax, so that was not done. So that's my understanding of what these types of things are, that the property owners in an area, if the city goes ahead with some type of project, there is a, an additional property tax assessed over a long period of time to pay for those improvements. Is that?
Yeah, there was essentially a lien put on the property and they had thirty years to pay off the the sewer improvements. Um, some people paid it off quicker, or when you sold the house, sometimes there was a requirement in the negotiation to be, have it paid off then, but yeah, it was just an additional tax or a fee that was, went with the property.
Um, in your opinion, I mean, we've talked about it before that there is the appearance that some sort of storm drain system is needed along Bristol Cone. Is that? Do you agree with that statement or?
Yes, I do. Um, yeah, I believe it was about ten years ago, um, maybe a little bit sooner than that. But uh, Public Works actually had a design done for the storm drain and for the streets. Um, the estimate for, granted, this is ten or so years ago, the estimate was about three hundred and twenty thousand for the s- storm drain improvements and one and a half millions for, one and a half million for the entire improvements, including the road, because only half the street's developed right now.
Right. So, um, again, I I guess there's two ways to look at how a project gets done. Uh, you can either take money from the existing residents, so we could try and find money in the capital improvement. Uh, you and I have talked about the fact that this is probably not eligible for flood control money uh, because it's too far away from the the flood control channels that the regional flood control district uh, has paid for. So that doesn't seem to be a possibility. Uh, or a tax district is created that applies to those lots, so those people benefiting from that construction of a project like that, uh, over a long period of time would be the ones that would be paying for that improvement.
Mm-hmm.
That seems to be the three possibilities. Councilmember Hoskins?
Uh, couldn't we, um, after we have it appraised and before we sell it, take that dollar amount off? It would be paid right away? Would be a deduction from whatever we're charging.
Sure, I'm the right person to answer that question with the appraisal amount, um.
He's, he's looking at the finance director now.
Brock might be able to answer that, or Diane, um. Yeah, I don't know the answer though.
Thank you.
Uh, Brock Armarchath, Contracts Real Estate Manager. Uh, when we order appraisals, uh, they ask for any special conditions with the property so that they would understand if they need to make any deductions from the value of the property. Uh, and in this case, when we would give instructions to the appraiser, we would make it clear that whoever purchased it would have to install certain improvements such as a half width of Bristol Cone, uh, the uh, storm sewer uh, to serve the, uh, to transport water from the upper area to the lower area and so on. Uh, we would provide them with copies of our designs that we have and our engineer's estimate. Uh, they would do their own estimate to see if our engineer's estimate's old, come up with what they think the value of that improvement would be. And then as they do their various deductions from the value of the land, they would take that as the deduction. So in essence, whoever purchased the land is already getting the land at a discount, so that in theory they would use the discount that they didn't have to pay to make the improvement that they're required to make, whether it be streets, electric line extensions, or sewer lines.
Uh, in your opinion, would that be the best way to go rather than doing the uh, taxable thing because that's something that goes on and on and on?
Well, it's a one and done uh, for the city. Uh, and eh, the city currently doesn't manage any SIDs or LIDs in the finance department, so this would be new territory for us as well. Um, I don't wanna speak for Diane, but I'm sure she'll nod her head when I say we don't wanna be uh, groundbreakers and starting fresh ourselves.
Well, again, I think I I've mentioned that this has been done in the past when there was new development done.
Right.
And if the idea is, well, we'll just deduct it off the sales price, that's again, simply having the residents of Boulder City pay the cost of that development. Um, because you're reducing the amount of revenue that would be available for the sale of the property and telling the new users of the property, don't worry, we're, we're gonna pay for this to uh, be possible for you. So yes, you could do that. Um, it reduces the value to the city. Um, and it eliminates the need for the new users of the land uh, to have to pay for the improvements that their development is requiring. That's the way I view something like that. Go ahead.
Okay, well, I wouldn't view it that way. I would say that the, the property is not sellable without taking care of that. So I I don't see that that it's a deduction myself, but thank you.
Councilmember Folda?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this was one that I wanted to ask, uh, to, a couple of questions of staff. Um, and probably to research because it's not something probably tonight. But um, to have an updated estimate of what the actual infrastructure would cost, because I know that the, the estimate that we have is about ten years old, and so, you know, that is probably not accurate anymore. Um, and then consider um, an LID SID, um, both either like you suggested, or, you know, how you stated about um, a long term where it builds up, or of, um, also to investigate what a one time um, payment would be, like if the residence, it's in- included in the sale of their home or the purchase of the home. So a one time versus a long term, and then what the actual costs is that we're looking at.
Yeah, I think the actual acronyms here stand for limited improvement district and special improvement district, but I could be off by a letter or two there. So again, the idea is, and I understand what you're saying, it could be uh, an amount assessed on each lot at the beginning, uh, that the purchaser of that residence would pay that at that time. Or it could be an assessment that's uh, spread out over twenty or thirty years.
In, in this case, so um, I was recently in a, in a development where they had um, a dam because a lo- a stream or pond ran through uh, between the houses. And so that's something that would be a long term because of the maintenance that would always be required for that. Where I don't know that a storm drain would continually need more maintenance, but correct me if I'm wrong.
Just cleaning it out.
Okay, which we do as part of our flood control, which is paid for.
If it's not a part of their incorporated structures, then it comes out of uh, the general fund. Um, I'd have to look into that, because I know they're, like, the mayor and I were talking about, there is uh, flood control structures that are running along, um, Buchanan, um. The reason we can't pay for it in this is because there's not an ongoing project that's close enough. Um, but I can look into see what it would take to incorporate that into their known structures.
Okay, so I think a little more information and research in that, what the actual cost would be and what's required would be, would be really helpful to determine that. And then again, um, the two different structures of LID, SID, so.
And again, I I think it's important to to keep in mind that uh, that type of work would only be necessary if the land is developed because it's not there now. So it's the development that requires that work to be done, that money to be spent. Any other comments regarding the LID SID, or are we okay? Any other comments regarding the LID, CID, or are we okay on that?
There was one other thing I wanted to clarify from our briefings yesterday. Somebody had asked about RTC possibly paying for the half-street improvements. And RTC will not pay for those improvements if there's a known development that's going to come in.
Normally in the valley, those types of improvements also are the responsibility of the developer.
Correct.
You know, if you go out into the outer portions of the valley, where developments have been built on one side of a main street and not the other, you'll see that it's a half-street with the idea that when the land on the other side is eventually developed, that developer will be responsible for finishing that out.
Yep.
Anything else on that particular subject? All right, the next bullet point is specify whether or not the city will accept a single contract for purchase with no more than XX phases for takedown. Or in the alternative, specify that the city will only accept a phase takedown of each subsequent phase as newly appraised to ensure city is receiving proper value for its property. In the responses from the developers, all of them expressed interest in purchasing the entire parcel. I did not see anything that suggested they were, there was interest from any of them in just purchasing a portion of it. So I think that sort of answers one of these. The concern then is, and we saw this with the Boulder Hills project, because of the limitation for any development, it's not developer, but development, any individual development is restricted to the 30 building permits per year. So that would then mean that the builder can't go as fast as they may be able to and need these type of phase takedowns or purchasing the property in sections. Again, I believe that all of the responses said that that would be their recommendation. I think some of them were saying that there would, they would need two. I believe another one said it was either three or four. The question then becomes if the land is appraised in one year, but not purchased for three years, did the value change during that three-year period of time? So to structure an arrangement like that, to be able to say that we will agree to sell the land to one developer, however, each takedown, a new appraisal would be required so that the value of the land is valued correctly. Anybody disagree with that interpretation? Then I guess the decision is, is that the way to go or not to go?
One question, with regards to the, the takedown, and I mean, I guess it's, it's all kind of figured out by the 30 allotment, you know, and sure, there's the potential that they can get 30, you know, kind of at the end, tail end of, of the year and then 30 at the beginning, you know, to kind of give them a pseudo 60. But I guess it just really comes down to, you know, how is it every year, you know, I, you know, I guess that's kind of the question is, as soon as that new thing comes in for that next 30, I guess just reappraising it at that year mark when they're ready for it?
Well, again, I, I, you know, we saw it occur with Boulder Hills where because of the way things were happening, they were not able to use 30 allotments in a year. And those went away and they reapplied to have those new allotments the following year. So that is the way the law works. If it's one development, it's, the law says 30 per year. Councilmember Hoskins?
Yes, what do we have with Storybook?
I'm not sure what you mean.
Well, did, um, did we reappraise?
We did not.
Okay. Since real estate is so high right now, it may be the best thing to do is just have one appraisal and sell the whole thing. Because we never know if things are going to go up or down, but I can guarantee you sooner or later it's going to go down.
But probably not for long, because that's never been the trend that you would, you know, the value would go down and stay down. It may go down for a short period. And I think there's a significant question about state law, which says that an appraisal is only good for one year.
I would just like to add to the discussion that another option as well, if there is a phase takedown approach, would be liquidated damages clause if the builder chose not to move forward with a, with a second or third phase or fourth phase or however. Just that would estimate, you know, the amount of damages in the, the city would cost in having to rebid the property and reappraise it, et cetera. So that's another option that you could have with a phased approach.
And I, I think that would be a, a better approach, because these projects are probably going to take some time. And certainly they could go down. But if you looked at a trend line over, let's say, 20 years, the number of years that it goes down versus the number of years that it goes up, I think the up years are significantly more. But the concern that I have is the state law. That says an appraisal is only good for one year.
I would just say that the charter requirement, which that's in the charter requirement that the, that the appraisal is good for a year. Once the land is under contract for sale, the appraisal is done, you know, at the time before the land is sold. Once that land is under contract for sale, whether the land sale has closed or not, it's, it's considered disposed of. So the, the one year, in, in other words, the appraisal's not invalid after a year, although it's obviously a policy decision of this council to want the land to be reappraised. And that's definitely something we can build into the contract and no problem.
And I think in any case, you're not going to get the money upfront. I mean, that's the whole idea of doing the phasing. Councilmember Holder?
Yeah, I just have a question for staff on, on how that land sale, did they make three separate purchases for the different phases? Was that three different property purchases? Or? He's shaking, sorry.
Well, it was three installments or three payments.
But was the property actually split into three different parcels when it was sold? So it wasn't just land, I mean, it was actually separating the land itself?
Correct.
Okay. So it could be reappraised or it could be, you know, separated out that way. If we did a phase, it wouldn't be just a contract that that land is earned, but we're actually separating the land. Creating a new, sorry, it's getting late.
I, I think it was agreed upon which segments.
Would be, but they were actually.
It wasn't really split up into three parcels. I mean, there weren't three separate purchases. It remained one parcel, but it was agreed upon and actually changed during the process of which portions of that parcel would be paid for at which time.
Well, there was the tentative map that had designated the three phases. And as each phase, as the developer and Storybook initiated the takedown, they purchased that portion and that was a designated parcel with the final map.
And as I recall, there was a change somewhere in there. As they got going on it, they realized that it would be better to change the shape of those, I believe, phases two and three. Wayne's here, we could cheat and ask him.
I, I don't recall exactly, but.
Okay. Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, okay, so Storybook, they, they had a three-phase takedown, was that? Okay, and there was not a reappraisal before each one?
Yeah, it was tied to the original sales contract.
It was tied to the original sales price, okay. So that, that goes along with the, once, once there's a determined appraised value and there's a purchase agreement, that continues on for as long as the, it takes for those three phases. Is there a negotiated time? It's like the three phases would be complete?
In, in the sales contract for Storybook, there is a time limit as to when they could exercise their option on the next phase.
Is there a cost to exercise? I know with the solar leases, is there a, a cost to those options? Or no, that's, it's just a, an agreement in the contract?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I, I guess the way I view this is because of our 30 allotments per year, I don't see how you can put 45 acres of land up and have one purchaser and not do it in some phased takedown. But how that gets structured is not dependent on the sale of the land for the Boulder Hills project. It can be structured differently.
I wanted to just make a comment, but I'm, I'm not sure if it's an appropriate comment, so.
We'll be the judge of that.
I know, and it's just financially thinking about it, if, if every year it was reappraised, and this might be a question that Brock would answer or Michael, but when this, when this development is, is created, isn't there, it's already decided what's going to be built? And then if the appraisals drop or go up, it could create a problem with the builder. If he's committed to creating certain houses and certain specs and, and all of a sudden, he's got to get, got to pay more money for that land, but can only put, you know, what he promised at the beginning. I don't know. To me, that would just be a question in my mind if I was.
And that, that's certainly a consideration, but I think the last housing report I saw for the valley, home prices increased 12% month over month.
Yeah, you can hope for that to continue. I mean, I.
Well, I'm just saying, that, that's something that happens is, you know, they pay more for materials, they pay more for labor, they may pay more for the land. I mean, it's, but I, I think Ms. Walker has brought up something. These deals can be structured in various ways.
Right, and that's the council's choices of what they want.
So that, that may be then what we should be doing is saying, okay, give us some options on how to structure a deal like this. So that the, the fact that land tends to increase in value, if these takedowns take four years to occur or five years to occur, that we're not getting five-year-old value for the money. So that, that may be the direction then, is let's look at some options on how to structure something like that. But I think the question is, are we looking at being able to do this in a phase takedown? Or are we only going to say, no, it, it's going to be a one-time purchase for the entire 45 acres? Or do we say, you know what, we're going to break this up into smaller parcels then?
Yeah, oh, I don't, I think, sorry, I didn't get a knowledge, so. You're looking at me, so I guess I'm going to be okay to talk.
Oh, you reached for the button.
Yeah, I would, I would like to see, I mean, obviously phase takedown is, is what the builders are looking at. You know, I didn't see anyone that said just one phase. Their concern if there was different developers, although it'd be advantage to us to, to have more mix and different kind of development. Their only, their concern that they voiced was like working with the utilities and things like that and just making sure everything was consistent. Public Works is coming up, has some opinion about that. But I wouldn't be amenable actually to having the parcel along Adams, separate from the other ones and having a different kind of development there than the others and, and having two developers. But that's just a thought. It'd be interesting for staff to kind of look at both options. Either a, a, one purchase of one developer with different phase takedowns or two developers with two different kinds, because that, because of the way the property is, you could cut off and make that a whole different community from the rest of the properties. So it wouldn't be like you're driving through one neighborhood and it's crazy and then, you know, very much different than the other ones. You could actually detach that. And I was also a little bit concerned about the golf course itself and the direction of balls flying in that area and, and just having kind of a different use at that end versus the other ones, which wouldn't have as much things coming directly towards them, like in the corner.
Apparently you're not aware that golfers, it doesn't matter where the house is, if it's within striking distance, it could be hit.
Well, hopefully the ones along Bristol Cone will be safer since they're parallel to the, the way that the stroke should be going.
It could be. Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I have a question that, that's always interested me in terms of the growth control ordinance and the 30 allotments. We talked about multiple developers, having several developments. And we could also have one developer create multiple developments. You could have, you know.
Actually, I don't believe you can do that with the wording of the law. Because I think that was anticipated, that somebody might try that. And within the law, it talks about contiguous parcels. So if you're trying to build a development right next to your other development, I believe the way the law is worded would not allow for that.
Contiguous, okay. I personally would rather see one developer come in and create a vision of, of how to put that all together. I would think that that's what they do. They, they can create, you know, if we're looking at different sizes, if we're looking at R2, R3 and up to R1 sevens, that hopefully any of them would be able to put, put together a, a distinctive set of, of houses of different types. The advantage, I guess, of having more than one is we'd have a faster development. It could be a problem in terms of shared improvements and, and working together. So that's.
That was my, the first thing that came to my mind is if you have multiple developers, it might be tricky if Developer A buys the northernmost portion. Figuring out who's going to pay for what, what part of the infrastructure, because with storm drain, we all know it flows downhill. So you want to start at the bottom and work your way up. So if you have two, three, four developers out there, it can get tricky on figuring out how those, how the improvements are going to be paid for.
And that's where the CID or LID solves that problem. Because it doesn't apply to the developer necessarily. All property owners in that area sharing the expense equally. Or proportionally. Councilmember Hoskins?
But I think all of the RFI's that we received spoke of single purchase contracts, correct? I did write some. I did prepare some things here that I'd like to read and see if we would agree with it, if we could make changes.
Please. Again, what I'm trying to do is, is get through what staff has asked us to get through, but yes, please go ahead. Absolutely.
These are what staff has requested for us to go through, but I, I can tell by our discussion, we'll have to make some changes, so this isn't etched in stone. But I would say that we would prepare an RFP. The development proposal specifies that the city will not consider a development density greater than, I had four units per acre, inclusive of the required infraction. If existing zoning districts are difficult to apply, apply the developer to purchase a unique zoning classification that permits the four units per acre. Require all submissions to include a draft subdivision layout and phasing plan for the development that complies with the city's growth control ordinance. Require all submissions to include sample building elevations and floor plans. Require all submissions to include sample building elevations and floor plans of the intended dwelling products. Require all submissions to provide a sample streetscape drawing of their plan to landscape their side of Bristle Cone. Require all submissions to provide a land purchase takedown schedule, including dates, amount to be paid, et cetera, including any additional premiums to be paid for takedown that occur after the scheduled dates. The city will not accept variance for subdivision standards. Appraisals of the land will be completed before the RFP is issued, and the city will only accept a single contract for purchasers. And then I would want them to bring the draft of the RFP back to the city for, council for their final review.
Thank you. Mr. Mays, as I recall, when the Boulder Hills project was going, there were discussions about when subdivision maps are due and considerations. The reason I'm asking that is I think some of the questions, or some of the points that Councilmember Hoskins just made, there's a difference between when those things are done and when the RFP process and all that. Could you explain the whole, well, maybe not the whole, but the subdivision process?
Sure. So, obviously, the RFP is the initial step in receiving proposals, and then negotiations with a contractor, with the developer. In conjunction with that would be the entitlement process. For example, some of the things that you're describing tonight may require an amendment to our master plan for the land use designations, because right now, this area is designated for low-density residential. In addition to that, as several of the council members have acknowledged, the current zoning is not appropriate for what would be the most appropriate type of residential development there, so that would need to be addressed. Rezoning, consideration by the Planning Commission public hearing, and final consideration by the city council. In addition to those items, you have the subdivision process. It's a two-step process, the tentative map. The tentative map looks at a lot of the details of the infrastructure, the tentative layout of the subdivision. That's reviewed by the Planning Commission and city council, and then you have the final map. And then that is recorded with the county fixing the division of the land. So that's kind of a broad overview of the process.
Can you relate those phases to when the actual sale occurs?
Typically, the final map is in conjunction with the purchase. So, for example, with the most recent Phase III of Storybook, final map came before the council, and we had the sale of the Phase III.
And I don't know if that helps you, Councilmember Hoskins, but the process is that, you know, they, you can come to an agreement to talk about the sale, but before the sale is completed, those various subdivision maps, final maps, have to be done before the sale would be completed. So I don't know if that fits into what your concerns are or not.
I know, I understand that. I was just giving you my suggestions as looking at this, maybe we could move forward. And I actually had a meeting with some of the staff and was given directions. So I totally understand what you're saying. Thank you.
Any other suggestions, comments on the bullet points? We still have two left to go here. Well, the second to the last then is direct staff to seek an appraisal of the land before or after the RFP is issued. I guess the concern is that until something is determined on things like the different zoning classifications that might be considered, I don't know that an appraisal is possible, but.
This is not my area of expertise, but my understanding is there is an appraisal that could be updated, so we wouldn't have to be starting from scratch on that. But we would have to determine whether we would want the infrastructure that's needed to be, to not be included or be removed from that. Right. Like I said, it's not my area of expertise.
Sure, I understand.
Certainly, the appraisal can evaluate different conditions for the land. The appraiser's going to be looking at the highest and best use, but as Brock mentioned earlier, we would be providing information on the ultimate types of development and any of the impediments that would factor into the value of that. So I guess the suggestion would be, following up on what Diane mentioned, we could update the prior appraisal for this land, and also receive feedback from the appraiser on the different types of development, and what that might, how that might impact the appraisal. But ultimately, it's going to be a factor as to what the final development is, in terms of density that has a factor in land value. That's why appraisers always ask, what is the zoning of the property?
Councilmember Folda?
Thank you. I would then suggest that we just kind of narrow down, get feedback from staff, and then do the appraisal after that feedback is received.
Anyone else?
I'd concur with that.
Other modifications or requirements for the RFP? Councilmember Hoskins has listed several. Anyone else? Councilmember Adams?
The one thing, and I had mentioned it during my briefing, is also within the master plan is, you know, for new developments to be, at least within a certain walking distance of neighborhood parks. I know, I don't think the Veterans Park is necessarily considered a neighborhood park, but it certainly is a beautiful park that people have access to, but I'm just trying to look at the space, I guess, is there access from Bristle Cone, from where this would be located, and easily, within that walking distance? Because if not, I would just want to include that, that there is access to, you know, that is considered something that is needed to make sure that people have access to a neighborhood park.
Certainly, asking the developers to respond to either access to existing parks or proposing parks within the development.
Thank you. I just want to remind council, previously when this RFP came to us, it's been, I don't know, a year or so, when we first looked at it, we did ask for green space to be in the property. There were some issues with that motion, and it was undone, so I'm not sure that where that part of it was, it stands right now, but we did originally ask for some green space within the development itself. And I believe there's also a 50 or 100-foot buffer between the golf course and houses that would be stated or restricted with the property, so regardless of what happened to the golf course, there would be a green space buffer between those houses abutting the golf course.
Mr. Mays, do you have any suggestions? I mean, clearly, that is something, I know, again, referring back to the Boulder Hills development, I think, I don't know if it was something that the developer offered, or if the city required, but I thought that it was one acre had to be set aside for parks, and the recommendation from the developer was to separate that acre up into three different parks, which seems to have worked out very well within that development. So I don't know if that came from the developer's side or from the city's side.
I think, you know, a couple of things that I've heard from the council as you've been deliberating this process, one of the things that I heard is that the RFP that went out for Track 349 was too specific, and as a result, trying to respond to that RFP made it problematic. What I'm hearing is you're wanting certain elements to be considered, but you're also wanting to hear from the developers on how best to fit that aspect into their vision for the project, which then allows the council to evaluate the proposals that you're receiving, and then you deliberate on which is the best fit for the community. So I would suggest, you know, providing guidance to staff on the broad elements that we will incorporate into an RFP, but that it won't be as specific as that RFP. That allows the developers, with their expertise in how these residential developments are built, to be able to respond to that better.
Thoughts or comments on Mr. Mays' comment? Councilmember Hoskins?
Oh, I think it's a very good idea. I did want to mention that, about the variance, because remember, we had so many variances for Storybook, that that's why, one of the things I think that we want to have in there, that we will not accept variance for subdivision standards. So I think what you have, what you're saying is, sounds reasonable.
Councilmember Bridges?
I like the idea of keeping it a little bit less specific, because we're talking about, R2, we're not talking about cookie cutter 7,000-square-foot lots, we're talking about multiple zones, possible multifamily attached units, to keep that open for design, and also, I think, in terms of having parks. I mean, I personally would like to see less water use areas, but green parks, places where more people can play. So I'm concerned if we get too specific, that they bring us what we're asking for, and we're not getting the best. So, that's my thoughts.
Thank you. Do you have enough from us this evening, in some comprehensible manner, that you could come up with a proposal to bring back to council?
I believe so. I'll look to our finance director in terms of sufficient guidance. We also have some follow-up information that we will provide as well, and what we can do is prepare a draft RFP to bring to you for consideration, and also answer the questions you've raised.
I think so, but the appraisal, I guess, is still a little bit, what are we going to do with that?
They want to hold off on the appraisal.
Hold off on the appraisal, okay. Yeah, we can do that.
Any additional questions or comments before we move on then?
May I do?
Councilmember Folda?
I'm just curious on if, having a really open RFP like that, if you could get separation of the development, or you just get one developer. Not sure how that would work on the RFP, to just bid on just a portion of it versus all, if that is possible or not, or we're just asking for one developer then for the whole price.
Mr. Mays?
Well, I think with some other RFPs that the city has put out, we can just have that as a choice. And again, if the developer is interested in the entire property, and they may come to you with a couple of different concepts of how they would develop that property, and another developer is only interested in a portion, well, they'll respond that way to the RFP, and then you can evaluate those different alternatives.
If we chose to go with one developer, and the other developer we would like, and who would want to just do one section, and another developer for, who want to do all the sections, could we possibly lose that bid then, because they're not getting everything? Or is it still competitive enough that that wouldn't happen, that they would still want to use what they could get?
I guess the intent with the RFP is for you to see what the respondent's vision is for the development, what they think they can make work there. Depending upon if there's somebody that believes they can only develop a portion of it, they're going to explain why, and you can evaluate that. As to whether developers would be willing to work together, I don't know if they would be. I suspect that, based on some of the things that have been mentioned tonight, and some of the challenges with only developing a portion, that we're only talking about 45 acres, likely the response is going to be, as the four respondents to the RFI have indicated, they're going to be interested in the entire 45 acres.
Okay. Then I would suggest with the RFP to kind of encourage a mix within those 45 acres, both, you know, in different areas of the development and different styles of housing. That minimal to everyone, I think that's what we're trying to look for, is a mix of things and not just one thing.
Any thoughts from other members of council regarding that suggestion? Any other questions or comments then, before we move on? All right. Thank you, Mr. Mays, Ms. Bellator, Ms. Littrell, all of, Mr. Armantrout. This is a big deal, so I'm glad everyone's involved. Item number 11, matters pertaining to city building code. Mr. Mays?
So in response to legislation in 2019, Nevada communities updated their plumbing codes to respond to an effort to promote water conservation. And that included requirements for certain types of plumbing fixtures that are Water Sense certified. Since the requirements and the adoption of the codes, one of the challenges that has been experienced throughout the valley is that either in some cases, certain types of fixtures aren't certified by Water Sense, or the limited supply has resulted in no availability of those particular products that are certified by Water Sense. So in response, Boulder City is proposing, through our staff ordinance, and by the way, on the dais is a slightly amended ordinance for your consideration. It updates the section reference that's highlighted in yellow. Is a proposed bill, Bill 1894, that would amend our plumbing code, that would include additional standards for substitutes for fixtures that are certified by Water Sense. This accomplishes the same objective, which is promoting water conservation, but provides the opportunity for other products to be utilized. With your consideration of Bill 1894, as with any amendment, there is the amendment to the code, there is a public hearing component as well. And I can answer any questions.
Thank you. And appreciate you mentioning a public hearing, so at this point, if you have questions regarding the specifics of this, this is the appropriate time. If there are comments about the bill itself, we should wait until after the public hearing to make those. So any questions for Mr. Mays at this time? All right, I will open the public hearing then. All right, I will open the public hearing then on Bill number 1894. Anyone wishing to comment on this amendment to the plumbing code may call in at this time. The phone number is 702-589-9629. Again, this is a public hearing. We do have a caller.
Good evening, this is Ainsworth Hunt. I just wanted to thank Mr. Mays for his service to the town and I think his proposal with regards to alternatives to the plumbing code are very thoughtful and appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, this is a public hearing on Bill 1894. Amendment to the plumbing code. Anyone wishing to comment on that, the phone number is 702-589-9629. All right, hearing no others, we will close the public comment for Bill 1894. At this time, are there any questions or comments from council? Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so. I just want to make sure, the amendment establishes the criteria that if certain fixture is not available, ones that meet minimum standards shall be permitted and that to be installed as part of plumbing projects. Okay, so this has been proposed by the Southern Nevada Home Builders Association and has been adopted by all other Southern Nevada jurisdictions in some form. And what I was going to say was, I reviewed the EPA documents regarding these plumbing fixtures and trust that these specifications are consistent with the WaterSense standards. I think it's a fine idea. It just makes a lot of sense and it makes us consistent with the other communities and it controls the water. So that's, so I do have a correct interpretation of what we're doing, correct?
Correct.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Folda?
Thank you, Mayor. This, so for disclosure, I did not approve the plumbing code when we approved it because I think there were some things that were too narrow in their scope of regulating things. And this is a fine example of that, where they're regulating, you know, the stamp of approval the fixture has in order to use it. I think this is, I very much support this bill. It gives you the minimum requirements that still fall in line with those things, but not having to have a certain product in order to it. And just for your information, most of these, all these minimum things, if you were to go to Home Depot, these are all fixtures. I don't think you could even purchase one that has more water per gallon per flushing or water anymore anyways. And so I think this would be very supportive to the Home Builders Association and anyone who wants to replace these fixtures to be able to do it in compliance with the code. So I support this bill. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Anyone wishing to make a motion on Bill number 1894?
I would like to make a motion to accept Bill number 1894.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Mays. Now move to item number 12 for possible action. Parcel at 941 Villa Grande Way pertaining to an existing parcel having to do with a drainage easement. Mr. Littrell?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Keegan Littrell, your Public Works Director. As the mayor just stated, the property owner at 941 Villa Grande Way is requesting to vacate a small portion of an existing drainage easement. They would like to be able to construct a retaining wall to be able to better utilize their back inside yards. And when the drainage easement was first set up, we had an open channel that was quite wide. That's why the easement's 60-foot wide. Since then, we've constructed a below-grade storm structure. It's a 36-inch pipe that handles all the storm water through there. So we don't need the 60-foot right away at this, or the easement at this time. They're requesting a little under 20 feet for a major portion of it and it's still going to be 10-foot off of our storm pipe. So Public Works has no objections to this request. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Councilmember Folda?
Thank you. Does staff have any concerns with future flooding? That channel's no longer there, correct? It's flatland, so it's not flooding, it's all underground at this time?
Yeah, it's all below grade.
So we don't have any concerns with future flooding in that backyard?
No. A 36-inch pipe can handle quite a bit of water and we haven't had any issues since it has been installed.
Thank you.
Questions or comments from anyone else? I just want to clarify, this is land that the property owner purchased some time ago, but there was an easement on that portion of the property that had to be dedicated to the flood channel. And now the flood channel can be narrowed. And so it's their land, so, okay, just wanted to make that clear. Any other questions or comments? Anyone wishing to make a motion then on Resolution 7260?
Mayor, this is a public hearing as well?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Littrell. You may have a seat. We will open the public comment regarding this. Anyone wishing to comment may call 702-589-9629. Again, this is a public hearing on Resolution 7261, which is the vacation of a drainage easement at 941 Villa Grande Way. All right, hearing no one then for public comment, we will close the public comment. And now we will move to consideration of Resolution 7260.
May I move to approve Resolution number 7260?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Littrell, thank you for that presentation.
Thank you.
Move to item number 14 then. Item 13 was heard earlier this evening for possible action. Discussion update and city staff direction regarding the city's position on certain bills introduced during the Nevada 2021 legislative session. Ms. Walker?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Good evening. This item before you today is a discussion update and city staff direction regarding the city's position on certain bills during, introduced during the Nevada 2021 legislative session. As you know, Section 8 of the city charter vests the determination of all matters of policy in the city council. The legislature is currently underway, legislative session is currently underway. As of the 33rd day of the 21st session, or the 2021 session, 401 bills have been introduced. And that was as of the 33rd day. Since then, hundreds of additional bills have been published. Before you today is just a portion of those bills. The process that's in place for review and recommendation on these bills is as follows. We have retained Lisa Foster and her team at Foster Consulting to assist in representation of the city. It is in her role that she initially reviews these bill drafts as they're published and distributes them to the appropriate department head to get their input on how these bills will impact Boulder City. When staff reviews these bills, they're not evaluating the policy on any sort of macro level. They are looking at how the bill will affect the city, whether it will require the city to spend money, require it to change its processes, et cetera. So they're looking for the actual impact to the entity of the city. Once we determine the impact, we then determine a position. Those are support, neutral, or opposition. Most of these bills, we're just tracking, a lot of them do impact the city, but either other, they also impact other local governments that echo the city's sentiment and are working on the bill to an extent that the city doesn't need to get involved. Other bills have a unique effect on, an impact on Boulder City and it would be helpful for the city to get involved. So before you today is a memorandum of several bills. They're not everything we're tracking, but we have broken them up as high and medium priority bills for your review. High priority bills are bills that will impact the city or could have a large impact if amended or not amended. A medium priority bills are bills that may or may not impact the city, but in, to such a large extent, but we'll have a special interest in tracking these bills more closely, so we'll want to keep you updated on their progress. So the item before you today is really just to review this memorandum, review the recommended position and action for action on these bills. Again, the majority is just tracking. Some of the bills, we do believe it's valuable for the city to get involved, usually working with stakeholders or working with the bill sponsor to mitigate impacts. So only a few of the bills really have actions in which the city would get involved, but it's important to have your review and approval of that before the city does so. So with that, you know, the discussion is just really, if you disagree with any of the proposed position or actions before you, in this memorandum, to, you know, highlight that and discuss amongst yourselves what you believe the city's staff involvement should be on those bills. Otherwise, it's just to approve the recommended actions as they're set forth here in the memorandum. With that, I'm happy to also answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Questions or comments on any of these bills that are listed or any other bills you may have become aware of? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you. I think in general, the actions that have been proposed, I think are certainly, I think that's the right track. I think, you know, some of that, one that, you know, that certainly concerns me is SB 10. You know, I see we're neutral on that, you know, and we are just tracking it. I think it's just because of the potential impact it could have on our residents, especially our senior fixed income residents. You know, I just, I think it's important that we do pay close attention to that. So as that comes down, you know, maybe we need to determine later, maybe we're not so in favor for it or they handle, address it in such a way that, that it might not affect those residents in particular. I just, I was just curious, just because I've received, I've received comments from people asking about, you know, AB 58 and where it's at, whether we support it or oppose it, those sorts of things. So I was just curious if you could, for the public's sake and those who are interested, if you could give us just a brief overview of where we're at with AB 58 right now.
Absolutely, yeah. AB 58 was heard in Assembly Judiciary a week or so ago and the Attorney General presented an amendment. At this time, the Attorney General's not going to move forward with seeking concurrent jurisdiction over law enforcement use of force investigations. So they worked together on this collaborative amendment that was presented in committee that was unanimously supported by the ACLU, Las Vegas Metro, Clark County Public Defender's Office, Nevada District Attorneys Association, and the list goes on. So our law enforcement agency no longer has any concerns.
Thank you. And then just the only other one that I'll mention, I think it's AB 116 regarding traffic violations. You know, it's kind of one of those things where, you know, it's a matter of policy versus, you know, and how it impacts us. And so it's not that I'm, I understand why the position is to oppose it considering how it would impact our courts. But at the other end of it, you know, it's certainly something that I just think in general, we need to start looking at and how, you know, because if we always just say, oh no, it's going to, it's going to cost us money, we may never be able to address some of the, you know, inequities that I feel in how laws apply to citizens and what is, you know, deserving of a criminal, you know, charge versus, you know, something less. So I just want to, I just, I just think it's something that should be on all of our minds as we, you know, think about how these things are addressed at the municipal level so that when we do have these discussions, we may be able to come out with something that works for everybody to achieve the same goal without upsetting, you know, the way in which we operate.
Councilmember Bridges?
I think it's interesting because my, my first thought is the same in terms of, you know, looking at it and gee, we'll have to change the software or we'll have to, we're not going to get as much money into our coffers. And the flip side to me is, is sometimes you need the stick to change behavior. And if people feel that driving recklessly or not paying attention to And if people feel that driving recklessly or not paying attention to basic laws of the road and say, well, if I get caught, it's only going to be a civil infraction and I probably won't even have to pay the fine, that may create more accidents. That may deter people from following the rules because if it's going to be a criminal misdemeanor, they're more likely going to follow the rules. And not that I feel like all the rules are right or that people should end up with a misdemeanor on the record for an illegal lane change. But I'm, I am concerned that if it, that it could go to the other extreme where people are not concerned about how they're driving because it's not going to be a big deal if they get pulled over. So that's.
Other questions or comments? Councilmember Hoskins?
Yes, I would like to thank you for tracking these. You're probably the best person that could be tracking them because you have the most information. And I remember that yesterday in our briefing that you mentioned that the staff had also been participating and making suggestions and changes. So I'd like to thank them for that. And on a lighter note, as I said yesterday, I'm hoping AB126, which is really just eliminating the presidential caucuses would make us all really happy that have worked these caucuses before. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Folder?
Thank you. First, I just wanted to acknowledge Attorney Walker and thank her for providing this to the council. I wasn't on council the last time they had a legislative session, but I don't remember something like this being brought forward to council. So I really appreciate you keeping everyone, the department heads, the council, you know, having this publicly so the public can have input. So I appreciate you bringing this forward. AB58 was one that I was concerned about, but it sounds like those amendments that we have been watching have occurred. As far as AB116 and also AB151, they're both traffic-related issues. I would be supportive of this if there was another conduit for tracking or following the money that goes with it. I used to work in warrants and it was just a revolving door and it just, tons of warrants would come through the courts because of traffic infractions. Warrants get issued. They get, they sit in drawers for years sometimes, or if they are, you know, they get another ticket and which turns into another warrant, and it's just this revolving door of warrants. And it's just really time-consuming on staff and resources. So if there was another conduit, a better way to address those issues, I would be supportive of that. So if there's amendments to that, which would state or provide a resource for the things that we're looking for to be accomplished while also changing those to infractions, I think I would be supportive of that. AB170, we have it as neutral right now. I'd like to change that. This is the bill regarding animals and a hearing for animals. Since we do have at our animal shelter, I would change the position to this as support and testify in support. I believe at this time, we don't really have the resources to really provide for the animals who are rescued in these situations. And this would be a way for the animal control to be able to help the animal until a hearing or settlement is done. Is that correct?
That's correct. It allows, essentially gives the animal control, animal shelter, some more authority to dispose, or I shouldn't say dispose of, but I guess have an animal in a safe place if the owner is abusing it. It's essentially an expedited process because, to save the animal, because the, the person accused of violating the ordinance can have a hearing. And if it's, it's shown that the citation, there's, it's clear and convincing that this happened, then the animal control or shelter can then take action to save the animal and put them in a safer place. So that's the intent of the bill, so.
Yeah, so I would like to move that one to, to support it. The, AB, I had a question about AB183. It's kind of a double negative, so I just want to make sure this is the, for bargaining units to, this would require them to have open meetings instead of closed-door sessions. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And so at this time, staff felt that was better to oppose, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And the last one, SB10, I just echo what Councilmember Adams has said about that. My only concern is, in following this, is our senior population and how it would affect them. And if there was amendment that would allow for an exception, as, you know, some states have that for senior populations, that they have an exception for how it affects them, I would be more supportive of that for the population that we have here, who are on fixed income. And that is all of the ones I had.
Anyone have other thoughts on the two particular bills that Councilmember Folder pointed out? Okay. I would just also like to indicate on SB10, they put a little more thought into that regarding people on fixed incomes. You know, the cap is being adjusted, and how would it be adjusted? Anyone else? Well, again, thank you for monitoring these bills. Ms. Foster has been the person for the city for a number of years that have looked after these. Your expertise, Ms. Walker, is certainly appreciated, your background at the legislature. The real fund still, we're still about six weeks away from when the real fund starts up there in Carson City, I think.
Yeah, I believe the first deadline for committee passage is second week of April. So, and they keep extending the deadline for bill introduction. So there's just, there's gonna be lots of bills just being published, and we're doing our best. So we'll have another update at the next council meeting for you with a lot more bills. So we're doing our best to get through all those quickly so that we can keep you up to date on what's being proposed.
All right, thank you. Okay, we'll move now to item number 15 then, for possible action, discussion and possible staff direction regarding the recruitment for city clerk. Mr. Bolt?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Bryce Bolt, Administrative Services Director. You do have before you discussion about recruitment for the city clerk. Three considerations that staff is seeking direction on would be the method of recruitment, the qualifications for the classification, and then compensation. You could, I provided backup material to give a little bit about similar qualifications for similar positions, and we're pretty much in the ballpark with what other municipalities have, but if you want to change those qualifications. I guess only on the, on the qualifications, I might suggest a desirable or preferable, not necessarily a requirement, but that they have a certification as a municipal clerk. They provide certifications.
All right, questions or comments? Councilmember Folder?
Yeah, I had a question about that requirement. Could that be, would that be, sorry, would that really narrow down the scope of who could apply? Or is that something that's more available to most people who work in a clerk kind of position?
I think if you're in a city clerk environment, then it would be, I'm sure it's encouraged to have that type of certification. And again, if we made it preferable, it wouldn't necessarily eliminate anyone, it would just make others more qualified than, than those that did not have it.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hoskins?
Yes, when you say certification of a city clerk, can you have certification of a deputy clerk would also qualify under that city clerk or?
You know, I think, and I'm looking at the Henderson job specification, it says certified municipal clerk. I'm not sure if there's a certified municipal deputy city clerk certification. I could check into that and, there is.
Or we could ask.
We could ask. There is, so.
It's the same certification for either.
Oh, okay.
I mean, I'm technically a deputy city clerk and I have my master municipal clerk certification, which is the highest certification you can achieve.
Right, good.
Other, Councilman Adams?
I'll just comment on, you know, between the hybrid approach versus the, you know, the full pack, you know, we're looking at $19,000 versus $22,000, which isn't a whole lot of difference. I mean, every penny counts. So I was a little, I don't know if disappointed is the right word, but I was a little surprised to see that there is that little in price difference for two, I feel, pretty different services. You know, and I'm not sure, staff's ability to go about it completely on their own, but, you know, I don't know that we necessarily need the full, the full service either, but given the price difference, I'm not sure what, what the best is. Like I said, I think the hybrid approach still might be the better, just, you know, it might save us a little bit of money, but I'm not sure just because of how minute those difference in prices are.
Councilmember Bridges?
I, I looked at that also, the $3,000 difference, and I guess my first response was, in terms of transparency and in terms of an objective hiring process, that I would be willing, I personally think we should spend the extra $3,000 for the full program. And that's what we're doing for the other two positions, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I, so far, I'm impressed with what they're doing in terms of that, and I would like to personally see the same responsibility on them to keep it, to keep it consistent.
With regard to the recruiting process, one, I think that Mr. Bolt has actually already done most all of the work that's needed by producing that brochure. Henderson has done this in-house. All of their recruitment was done in-house. Is that, that's my understanding from speaking with some of the officials down there.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, so they didn't utilize an outside firm? They did the postings for the position and reviewing the resumes?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so again, it is possible. They are in the process, actually, I don't know if they've made their final decision yet, but they know that there's a pool of candidates out there that are interested in this type of position. So I think that we're like 95, 98% there already on this type of thing. So I don't see the need to utilize the outside recruiting firm again. I think Mr. Bolt has already shown that he has the brochure ready. The suggestion you made to say that we would want a person to have that qualification as a municipal clerk certainly seems to be something that should be added to that, but not as a requirement, just something that is preferred with the candidate. The other thing that is open on that brochure, of course, is the salary range. I had included some information that I had found from the website Transparent Nevada regarding the different salaries in the state of Nevada, as well as what was listed as the salaries for the city clerk here in Boulder City from 2016 and 2019. Were those in the same range that, do they appear accurate? Let me put it that way.
They appeared accurate, yes, sir.
Okay. And was there any, I mean, again, these, this is information off the web, which, you know, I can't say is completely accurate, but then looking at the postings you had from the other cities, it does seem to fairly well define the ranges that the others are asking as well.
Yes, sir.
Okay. With that, I would suggest then that we have a range somewhere between 75,000 to 115,000 for the position. And I guess my last comment would be then, what timeframe would you need? I mean, you have the brochure fairly well done. What timeframe would you be looking at before being able to actually post for the position?
Well, I think we could post within a couple of days.
All right. Any other thoughts on that? Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I'm concerned about the salary range, and I would propose to make it higher at starting at 90 because right now it looks like deputy city clerk salary is 87,54. No, less? Okay, because I would want it to start at a higher rate than, than the current deputy city clerk.
You know, that's certainly one way of doing it, is just stacking salaries on top of others. You know, I think when we look at what a starting salary should be, it should be with a recognition that other employees have been here for significant periods of time or not. But that's my thought on it. Councilmember Folder, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I would agree that maybe the, what you're looking at, the deputy clerk has been here for quite some time, I believe. So you're looking at, and it would be based on experience, and so she wouldn't necessarily be starting at, the next person wouldn't necessarily, that's a range. And so I would agree to that. If you look at our sister.
I'm sorry, which range would you?
Oh, sorry, one suggested by the mayor. As, if you look at our neighboring county area cities in similar size, Mesquite, they have started at 72, and that's closer to what our deputy city clerk is getting. So I think we're still above those pays. And then, you know, obviously, the larger cities are able to do a little bit more, but they also have a lot more as far as population and what they're dealing with. And so I think that falls between the low range and the high range that we're seeing in the cities around us. The other thing about the recruitment process itself, I understand what Councilmember Bridges is saying, however, what we're paying, what we'd be paying for has been basically already done. The recruiting process would, at this time, they would just submit those applications online. So, you know, they're not really doing a lot of that work anymore because this legwork's already been done. So basically, they're just submitting stuff on the internet at that point. And I don't think that's a job that really constitutes what they're asking for. If they would have given us a reduction since we already, you know, are paying significantly for the other processes, it'd be worth it, but I, for what, where we're at in this stage already, I don't think it's worth what they're asking us to do, that we could do certainly in-house with a pool of city clerks readily available that have just, you know, tried to apply next door. So that's my thoughts.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
I'll just say, a comment as far as price range goes, I think it's, I think it's appropriate. I mean, it is a wide range, but I think it does allow us to look at experience, and I think that can really help determine that, that price point when we're looking at those individuals. Just to, Mr. Bolt, with, you know, with your staff and your ability, do you think that, you know, given the lot, like has been said, a lot of the legwork has been done with the other two, you know, we have this brochure, do you feel that your staff is sufficiently, you know, ready to, to address this, this hiring process and handle it in a competent manner?
I believe so. I believe so because we're not going to get hundreds of applications. It would be a relatively small number, I believe, and that will make it more manageable for myself and my staff.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Bolt, how long of a period of time does something like this normally get posted? In other words, what's the opening? In other words, what's the opening, closing date for the applications?
You know, in a position of this level, usually 30 days it would be out. We'd post it for 30 days. It could be longer or shorter. Shorter is a little bit quicker turnaround time, but 30 days seems to be, that's what I would post this level at.
All right.
I would give, excuse me, oftentimes, I'll be posting on various websites and you pay for 30-day advertisements usually on those. So, we, we hang it out there for that amount of time.
Okay. And I believe then our second meeting in April is on the 27th of April? I'm not asking you that. I'm just, I believe the April meetings are the 13th and the 27th.
Okay.
Would it be possible then, if you're able to post that this week, that you could give us a listing or samples or the resumes of the people who have applied?
Sure.
I, I'm assuming that most are going to come in when it first gets posted. So, as you get towards the end of that 30-day period, there may be, I mean, there could be a last-minute rush. But I would assume you would have an opportunity over the first couple of weeks to start reviewing the resumes so that by the time it closes, many of them are already going to have been reviewed.
Yes, review them as they come in.
Okay, so, does that sound workable then to schedule this for the April 27th meeting?
Yes, and you don't want to see the qualified candidates? Okay, yeah, I could produce that. I mean, I'd have to, today's.
The 23rd?
Yeah, we could just have it just for 30 days and I could bring them back on the 27th. I'm trying to think about when the material is due for that packet. That would, that would trim me down too by another week or so, I believe.
We could have a preliminary set though.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, because you'd probably need to, well, it would have to be submitted by the 19th, the list. I mean, we can schedule the agenda item, but the materials would be, needed to be provided by, well, actually noon on the 20th, I guess.
Yeah, and it would be what I have at that point in time.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Well, Councilmember Adams?
Just, just so that we, just, just to put it out there, are we opposed to holding it just until the May 11th, the following council meeting? Just so that, you know, we're not pushing ourselves into a, a point where, you know, we're needing to have these things submitted before the end of the posting period is even up? You know what I'm saying?
Well, the reason I'm suggesting that is, I mean, obviously, I'm not suggesting that decisions would be made. But quite honestly, you know, we've come into a situation here where it took us four months to get to consideration of the city manager and city attorney. So, we had like an enormous amount of time and we had seven days to look at the, actually, six days to look at the resumes.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to put it out there.
Ms. Walker, did you have a comment?
I was just going to say, I mean, staff can obviously provide things as, as we go. It doesn't have to be provided for a meeting per se. Obviously, when those materials are later given to you at a meeting, those would then be included in the packet. But there, it's not to say that, you know, the materials can't be given to you earlier or as received.
Okay, so, I, I mean, again, we can still set this for an agenda item, whether it's for a status or further direction or however we would like to do that. Any other questions or comments? Well, I would make a motion then to incorporate that, that we do this with our own resources, our own HR department, that the brochure that has been included in our packet include the recommendation from Mr. Bolt for preferred certification, that the salary range be established at $75,000 to $115,000 annually, and that we schedule a meeting for April 27th, or excuse me, schedule an agenda item for April 27th. That's the motion.
Okay, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Bolt. I do appreciate the work on, on getting that brochure and all of that together.
Thank you, sir.
Looks good, thank you. Item number 16, city manager's report. Mr. Mays?
Nothing unusual to report.
Thank you. Any questions or comments regarding the city manager's report? All right, we'll move to item number 17, public comment. This is our final public comment period. Anyone wishing to make comment may do so on any issue during this period. Speakers are limited to five minutes. And as always, please be concise and civil with your comments. The phone number to call is 702-589-9629. This is our final public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak, the number is 702-589-9629. Madam City Clerk, were there any emails or voicemails received?
None.
Thank you. And I do see one member of the public still in attendance. Anyone wishing to speak who's present? Again, the phone number is available, the number is 702-589-9629. Hearing no one for public comment, I will close the public comment period. We'll move to our last item, city council reports. I believe it's time to start at that end. Councilmember Folda?
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing to report tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Hoskins?
I have nothing to report, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I'm going to take their time. No, I'm not going to go on for very long. I, I went to a meeting of the Southern Nevada Water Authority last week. It is not good news. We are forecasted inflows from Lake Powell, to Lake Powell about 47% of average. Our precipitation to date for water supply is 77% of average. Snowpack 86% of average. They did lake need elevation probabilities that in 2022, we will be at, there's a 90% chance we will be at 1,075 feet, which means that as a result of the drought contingency plan, Nevada would receive about 21,000 acre-feet of water than we receive now. So, that's one side of the bad news. The other side of the bad news is as a result of the pandemic, we are all using more water. Our water in Boulder City use is up 9.7%. And that's for early 21 water use shows a somewhat similar pattern as at 2020. So, we're all using, and what they were talking about is a lot of it is outside water. It's not the water in our houses. It's people watering their lawns more, people using outdoor water. So, they are encouraging, we are encouraging, non-functional turf reduction to reduce consumptive water. That's water that does not go back to a water resource system as opposed to non-consumptive water like in our sinks, which would be returned to a water resource system. Unfortunately, and I'm going to say this and it's an uncomfortable thing, all of Boulder City water is consumptive water. None of it goes back into its system. It doesn't go back into the river. It's treated and goes into evaporation ponds. All of the other municipalities treat their water to the point that it can be returned to its water resource system. It's still important, though, for us to think about removing non-functional turf, meaning if the only person who walks on the grass is the person who mows it. So, that's, that's the point is we are going into a very serious water crisis, believe it or not. And the biggest surprise to me, and I'll finish with that, the biggest surprise to me is that we are using more water. Individuals are staying home and they want to make their lawns nice and grow flowers and plants and whatever. So, that's my, my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
Thank you. I just want to encourage everyone out there who is eligible to receive the vaccine to please go out and get it. You know, the eligibility will be opening up shortly to a much, much wider audience. When we talk about, you know, certainly choice in whether or not to get the vaccine, I just want to make it clear that there are those out there who have no choice, who either have, you know, immunocompromised or have reasons in which they cannot get the vaccine, even if they were to want it. So, you know, when we talk about things like herd immunity, we have to remember that not everybody even has the choice of whether or not they get it. So, of course, everybody has to make the right decision for themselves. But I do strongly encourage everyone out there who is eligible to receive the vaccine to please go out and do so.
Thank you. And I'll just add on to that, that Governor Sisalak has identified April 5th as the date that all age groups will be opened up. We are currently at age 55 and older. Also, anyone with underlying health conditions who's younger than 55, I should say between the ages of 16 and 55, you're now eligible as well. And as these new groups open up, as we continue to open these lanes up, no one loses their opportunities. So, if you're age 65 or older, you're still eligible. And again, please, you know, take a look at the website for the phone number. Contact the, you'll be calling the Parks and Rec. They will schedule you either at the Smith Building or at Boulder City Hospital. There are pharmacies in town that are also doing this, that are using a separate system. You know, if you have hesitancy about this, I would keep in mind that millions of Americans have received these vaccines now. And in order to get that herd immunity about this, we're going to need a lot more to get that. So, please do, if you have questions about it, you know, get some scientific advice on it. It's important that we get out of this. And as I had said at our last meeting, I would like to see the 4th of July be the great dambarie that we would like to have here. Councilmember Adams?
Sorry, I just, I just wanted to clarify. I did say immunocompromised, that is not an accurate statement. But there are those who, who are not able. But I just wanted to say that, you know, it is not a live vaccine. And I just didn't want to use the wrong terminology and make someone out there think they were not able to get it. So, I just wanted to be sure I'm using my words correctly. Sorry.
And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.